I'll go ahead and call this meeting the October 9, 2018 meeting. To order, the first item on our agenda is close meeting. Specifically, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following. Section 2.23711, "Discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purposes or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body." One, government center of property. Second item is consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisions of legal advice by such counsel, and that would next, performance agreement Wolverine. And the next item is consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating posture of the public body, by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County at all. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fischakowski?
Aye.
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 Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six a.
Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Fischakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Settlemoss.
Certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. What this certification is, it's our Board's word to you that we're only talking about things that were supposed to be in closed session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Fitz?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fischakowski?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Settlemoss.
The next item on our agenda is a moment of silence, and then after that, I'll ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge. I've asked Sauce to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is presentations. Specifically, Chris McDonald, the Virginia VACO Director of Government Relations will present an award.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and members of the public gathered here this evening. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be with you all tonight. My name is Chris McDonald. I'm the Director of Government Relations for the Virginia Association of Counties. It is my distinct honor to join you tonight to present Montgomery County with a 2018 VACO Achievement Award. For the benefit of those here tonight, you may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties, a quick bit of background. Founded in 1934, VACO was established to serve and support your efforts as county officials in a number of ways. First and foremost is through our advocacy efforts in the state legislature and at the federal level, where we work to promote the interests and legislative priorities of our member counties. In addition to our advocacy efforts, we also serve counties through numerous education programs, member services, and county-specific technical analysis expertise. Sixteen years ago, VACO first established our achievement awards program to better recognize counties that have developed and adopted innovative approaches to providing public services, as well as to identify programs that could serve as role models for other counties to emulate. This year, we had three outstanding judges who reviewed and selected winning program submissions. First was Ted Kovaar, Associate Director of the Virginia Institute of Government and a former city manager; Dr. Cheryl Bailey, Senior Vice President at Springstead Incorporated and former Chesterfield County Deputy Administrator; and finally Larry Land, our retired VACO Director of Policy Development. In reviewing submissions, programs are judged according to several key criteria. First, does the program offer an innovative solution to a problem, situation, or delivery of services? Second, does the program promote intergovernmental cooperation and/or cooperation with the local, state, federal, or private entities in addressing such a problem or situation? Third, does the program serve as a role model that other local governments may learn from or implement in their own localities? Fourth, is the program based on programs from another public or private entity but represents an innovative approach or customization by the local government? And then finally, judges use their expertise and instincts when making the final decisions. Over the years, the achievement awards program has grown more and more competitive. This year, we received a staggering 106 entries, which was 30 more than last year and our highest ever, and ultimately selected just 27 winners from 19 counties. Montgomery County is no stranger to achievement awards, as this is actually the third time that the county has received one. Previously, the county won in 2005, and then again in 2010. This year, we're pleased to recognize Montgomery County for the exemplary work with the Montgomery County Animal Care and Adoption Center, or CENTER or ACAAC, which officially opened its doors to the public on April 29, 2017. Since the Center's grand opening, the county has developed several innovative programs that have enhanced the quality of life, both for county residents and for their animals. Today, I'm happy to recognize the county and the ACAAC for three specific programs. First was the Center's social media efforts. Since its opening, the Center's rolled out a robust social media strategy designed to increase pet adoptions, reunite lost pets with their owners, and promote volunteer and donor opportunities. Through themed adoption events such as Black Cat Appreciation Days or Adopt a Shark Week event, where adoptable dogs and cats were dressed as sharks and put up for adoption, the Center has successfully found homes for over 600 animals in 2017. By comparison, just 200 dogs were adopted in 2015 and 169 in 2016. Additionally, thanks to spreading photos and information on social media, at the time of the Program's award submission, 66% of all lost pets had actually been reunited with their owners. And finally, through the Center's engagement with an audience of animal lovers, they've been able to tap into a community of donors and volunteers to outstanding results. The next program we'd like to recognize is the wonderfully named Cadda Day. The Center partnered with the Montgomery-Floyd Regional Library to create Cadda Day, a program whereby cats from the Center were brought to the Christiansburg branch of the library each month and allowed children to interact with and read with the animals. The program has been enormously beneficial in two ways. First, it helps socialize the shelter animals and makes them more appealing to potential adopters; and second, it provides children with a safe, nonjudgmental audience to whom they can practice their developing reading skills. And finally, I'm happy to recognize the Center's live release rate goal. In 2017, Virginia's public shelters had a live release rate, meaning adoption, transfer, rescue, or owner reclamation, of just 77.8%. The Center set a goal for 90% or better and designed and administered a variety of creative and collaborative events and programs. Thanks to the efforts of many dedicated staff members and volunteers, events such as Free Pet Adoption Weekend, and a highly increased community awareness and engagement, the Center actually attained a 96% live release rate in 2017. At this time, I'd like to present this plaque to Montgomery County to honor and thank them for their efforts. VACO will once again recognize the county's achievements when we convene at our 84th Annual Conference, held this year November 11 through 13. We also invite you to visit our website to view all of the entries, some of which may be adapted and implemented in your own county. Please join me one more time in congratulating Montgomery County on their outstanding achievement.
Who's going to take the picture?
Oh, that's right. We'll find someone.
Can we also just leave it there?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
A couple of scratches.
Yes, please, a little bit. Okay. Do you want one of us, please? This one. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Absolutely.
That's our end. Our president.
I know to it to the rest of the way?
Actually, give it to Jim.
She's sitting there. Right here.
It's okay.
Mr. Chairman, we'll make sure that that plaque is placed in a prominent place, and I also want to reiterate, Chris, thank you for being here tonight. I also want to recognize a lot of the staff that's here tonight because they're the ones that made all this come together and happen. So, thanks to everyone for all the hard work.
Can we come up?
Thank you all. The next item is a public hearing, specifically a special use permit. The following public hearing was published according to law in the New River Valley section of the Roanoke Times on September 7, September 14, September 21, 2018. Specifically, special use permit for a public utility substation, a request by Meredith C. Novak, applicant agent, Roanoke Gas, for a special use permit for a public utility substation, natural gas gate/ regulatory station on approximately three-acre portion located in the northeast corner of 57.8 acre tract, tax parcel 047-A-60,63, parcel ID number 002902, adjacent to the Roanoke County jurisdiction boundary. The site's public access is off of Stones Key Plain, SR 813, Elliston, and further accessed via private drive off of the northwest side of Stones Key Plain, SR 813, approximately 1,250 feet from the intersection with Roanoke Road, Route 11 and 460, and a private easement on an adjoining property. The property is zoned agricultural A1 and currently lies in an area designated as Village Expansion in the 2025 Comprehensive Plan, and further designated as Low Density Residential in the Elliston-Lafayette Village Plan. Emily?
Good evening. I'm going to review with you the staff analysis that you received in your packet for tonight's meeting. First, starting with the vicinity map, as Chris wrote in the description, this site is in the Austin area, immediately adjacent to Roanoke County. We're going to show a few maps. The request is for a special use permit for a public utility substation located off Stones Key Plain, and it was identified as parcel ID. That parcel ID is tied to two tax that numbers. So you can see here in the map, this is how they're divided with the railroad right away in the middle, and we're going to be talking about the northern parcel. So this vicinity map is just the aerial, and it does show you the line there for Roanoke County. In this map, you can see that it's zone A1, which is represented there by all the white, and the darker line here is the access MVP line, which is why this parcel was selected. You can see further on this aerial that's provided in the applicant's application. They sort of show a concept area, and then it shows how that ties into what they've identified as the MVP crossing. This is a close-up of that black area that I was just pointing to. It shows the station equipment section, fence here in this area, and then the stormwater facility in this area, and then this depicts that it remains wooded around the property. And this is the access road coming in. So a couple of photos just to let you see the site, that railroad right away that I was speaking about. You come down Stones Key here, and then cross over the railroad right there. You travel along access easement to get to the location. It's a wooded lot with gravel drive. And this is basically from that gravel drive, once you get onto the site, looking over at the area that was selected for the gate station. Just to give you a little more background, as part of the planning commission's review, we typically do site visits, and so that's where we took those photos of the existing site, but it is an undeveloped site. We went to a couple of gate station locations. The first location I'm going to show you is existing one in Montgomery County that's on Break Road, and you can see it here, just on the aerial identified, the parcel here in yellow, and these are both residences right next to it there on Break Road. That's been in operation since the '60s, and it's tied into the East Tennessee Natural Gas Line. The other station that we went to that Roanoke Gas indicated was more similar to the station that they're showing at this site is this one here in Roanoke County, and that gives you a sense of what the above-ground equipment looks like. So as I mentioned, this is a special use permit request to construct what they identify as a gate station, and we classify that in zoning as a public utility substation. It's for distribution of natural gas locally. It is separate and was not approved through the FERC process. As we're used to whenever we're talking about things associated with MVP, most of those have so far been approved through FERC. This has to comply with Montgomery County zoning regulations and any other regulations that apply. If approved, it will have to go through a full site plan process. And this is just a slide that identifies this wasn't approved through the FERC process, which is very, has been very limiting to the Board. The county has authority over this as a land use because it was not tied to the FERC approval. And it does not or cannot change anything approved through the FERC process. So when we looked at some impacts for this site, the first that we're going to talk about is transportation. This is located on a private access easement off of a private drive. The applicant has obtained the easement from the neighbor to access the property, and that addressed maintenance and access of the site. In conjunction with our review with VDOT, we had them look at the site. The entrance on Stones Key will need to be upgraded into a more commercialized entrance just to make sure it has the radius and the width that it did. And that's due to adding the use of additional parcels. So it's not the use itself, because that will have very low traffic. It's because VDOT has a rule that once you've exceeded three lots of parcels that are getting access, you need a larger entrance, and so that's just to make sure that you have the ability to have two-way traffic, and people don't have to wait in the right way to make their turning movements. Also, VDOT wanted to make sure that the weight limit of the bridge over the Roanoke River was kept in mind, and they gave that weight limit and talked about making sure that was clear during construction, and the applicant is aware of that and does not think it would be problematic. There's no water receiver connections proposed, and obviously this use doesn't generate additional students. This site is a little different than what we have through our normal site plan process because DEQ will be the reviewer for both ENS and stormwater on that site. And then if you looked at the topography, it's definitely not located in a flood zone. It's up the ridge a little ways. So this is another map that shows the property and the existing MVP line. You can see here the site's shown as Village Expansion in our 2025 Comprehensive Plan. And then if you pull up the Elliston-Lafayette, it's identified for Low Density Residential, and that's adjacent to, you've got the railroad right away here, some open space in that floodway, and then over here you get into some Medium Density Residential, and you can see the mixed use of the village there. So as I mentioned, it is designated as Village Expansion in the Comprehensive Plan and calls for a variety of uses. We've talked a little bit about our expansion areas and that those are identified typically tied to our villages for additional uses and densities. And we also, so we have several tied to land use policy statements, and then we have an orderly extension of utilities policy statement in there as well. The Elliston-Lafayette plan identifies Low Density Residential and then Compatible Commercial Development for that area. As part of this review, and as for any expansion of a public facility, we do what we call a 2232 review when looking at the Comprehensive Plan. It's a state code requirement and also a Montgomery County code requirement. This and the pipeline that it ties into were not identified in the 2004 plan when it was adopted, but there are the policy statements that I did mention previously that talk about this being a growth area, and this is a type of utility to support that growth, and also the infrastructure, general infrastructure needed for the area. As we mentioned before, the site's zoned A1 and qualifies for the SGP as a substation. The parcels around are greater than 30 acres in size. It's accessed via private access easement that's already been granted to Roanoke Gas from the private property owner. The site has very limited visibility based on its location, and it is in our village The applicant has indicated it's a natural gas gate station, and they'll speak more to that when they present here shortly. It has to be reviewed independent of the MVP. We have already covered that. It's not part of the exemptions that have been covered on other uses. Gas is not extracted there. It's just basically the gate is a regulator, and again, they will speak to that a little bit more. For the noise from the site, they have proposed an eight-foot metal panel fence that's both for security and for noise and visibility. It's not a very loud or bright site, and they'll speak to that a little. And if you look through your packet, there was the green paneling shown around. That is the fence that we're speaking of there. It's kind of a paneled metal fence. The Planning Commission did hold its required public hearing for the SGP and identified some conditions consistent with staff. So there was a site plan that showed the general layout, the screening provided by the metal fence, limitation on construction activities to something that we typically do, although the applicant has indicated the construction phase will not be very long because it is located on a private drive, just keeping those between seven and seven, and to make sure that at all times, even during construction, that the right way remains passable. So the Planning Commission recommended approval with those conditions. Five vote of five to two with two members absent that evening. And that's all that I have for you. I can answer any questions that you might have, but also the applicant has a presentation that I'm going to pull up for them.
Do folks want to allow the applicant and then ask questions? All right, so we'll have the applicant go ahead and come forward, and then we'll ask questions about him. Yes, sir.
All right, I'm a lefty, so. So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is John Barazio, the President and CEO of Roanoke Gas Company, and our office is located on Kimball Avenue in Roanoke, Virginia. This evening, I'd like to provide you an overview of our company, Roanoke Gas, talk a little bit about our distribution system, talk about the increases in demand of natural gas that we are experiencing, as well as the reason why we chose this location, and a little bit of description about this transfer station that we are proposing. There we go. All right. Thank you. So, Roanoke Gas Company, we've been around a long time. We started in 1883. We're regulated by the State Corporation Commission. We serve a little over 60,000 customers. From a volume standpoint, 60% of our volume comes from commercial industrial customers, about 40% from residential. We have 110 active employees, and we operate and maintain approximately 1,100 miles a day in our distribution system. So this map here is a map of our service territory. What you see, okay, there you go, what you see highlighted in yellow is our existing service territory, and this line right here is the Montgomery County-Roanoke County line, and we do provide service to the eastern part of Montgomery County. We'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later. The shaded blue area here is new service territory that we propose to expand. It's the area in Franklin County that we currently do not have service territory in. We have an application in front of the State Corporation Commission right now that we accept to receive hopefully approval here shortly. Now, we are served by two transmission lines. To the north, this blue line is Columbia Transmission. This line was installed in the 1950s. It's a 24-inch line, and these red lines here are subtransmission lines where we take gas off this line and into our system. To the south, we're served by East Tennessee, which is the yellow line. This is an eight-inch transmission line, and as you can see, it terminates in Roanoke. So basically, we're at the end of the transmission line there. And this green line, dash line, is the Mountain Valley Pipeline. So we have experienced a growing demand for natural gas on our system, which we will talk about here more in depth shortly. Unfortunately, the two transmission lines I receive our natural gas from do not have any more firm capacity available to meet our increased natural gas needs. The supply received from the Mountain Valley Pipeline is critical to meet the growing demands of natural gas on our system and ensuring our customers will have natural gas service, especially during those extremely cold periods of the winter. In addition, and this station will be located approximately right about there, the proposed transfer station will provide a third source of gas independent, third source of gas to our system, which will improve the reliability of our system to our customers. Right, this chart here, or this graph here shows our gas volume growth. This is 2018 versus 2017 through June 30, so it's from October through June 30. Blue line represents 18 volumes. The red line is 17. As you can see, we've had increased growth in residential, commercial, industrial, especially noted in commercial, we saw 20% growth, industrial 4% growth, and in our top 10 customers, we saw a 9% increase in their volume. We think this is primarily attributable to the increase in the economy that we're, everybody's seeing out there. When we look at customer growth, from 2015 through 2018, we had 2.1% growth in our customer base. We're averaging about 600 new customers a year, and this year, we're probably going to exceed the 600, and we foresee that trend continuing. And I believe the primary reason we're seeing that is the cost advantage that natural gas has to offer for residential and commercial customers. Now, we looked at an average residential customer, looked at our billing rates as well as our FICC charges, and came up with an average rate per unit of natural gas. And when you compare that to propane and fuel oil, that's equivalent to paying 88 cents per gallon. transfer station will provide a third source of gas independent, third source of gas to our system, which will improve the reliability of our system to our customers. Right, this chart here, or this graph here shows our gas volume growth. This is 2018 versus 2017 through June 30th, so it's from October through June 30th. Blue line represents 18 volumes. The red line is 17. As you can see, we've had increased growth in residential, commercial, industrial, especially noted in commercial, we saw 20% growth, industrial 4% growth, and in our top 10 customers, we saw a 9% increase in their volume. And we think this is primarily attributable to the increase in the economy that we're, everybody's seeing out there. When we look at customer growth, from 2015 through 2018, we had 2.1% growth in our customer base. We're averaging about 600 new customers a year. This year, we're probably going to exceed the 600, and we foresee that trend continuing. And I believe the primary reason we're seeing that is the cost advantage that natural gas has to offer for residential and commercial customers. Now, we looked at an average residential customer, looked at our billing rates as well as our FIC charges, and came up with an average rate per unit of natural gas. And when you compare that to propane and fuel oil, that's equivalent to paying 88 cents per gallon of propane or $1.32 for a gallon of fuel oil. So as you can see, from a residential business perspective, it is a low-cost, a much more attractive alternative for their energy supply. Now, one of the reasons we're experiencing growth is the partnership with Virginia Tech and Correlion. You know, they have developed a medical school as well as a research institute. They're right now in the construction phase of a 90-plus million-dollar expansion there, which is about 130,000 square feet that we're going to be providing service to. And this is just one of many expansions that they're going to phase in over the next 10 years. We're excited to be part of that expansion and the load that that'll bring on, as well as all the nice high-paying jobs that that'll bring to Southwest Virginia. In addition to that, we've seen, we have seen recent increase in gas demand during the last couple years in our system. These are just a sampling of some of them. Some of the new customers that have come on to is Ballast Point, which is a brewery, Arda Group, which is a steel cad manufacturer, Hum Kibachet, which is a West Coast that's opening up an East Coast facility, and you may have read in the paper, Elabor Corporation, which opened up this past week there in Bodata. In addition, we've seen increased demand in our existing customers. The VA Hospital there located in Salem, they're in the final phases of putting in a combined heat power system where they actually use natural gas to generate electricity. It's going to be substantial load. General Shell converted their kiln from 60% coal over to 100% natural gas to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. And Altec has doubled their footprint. You know, they make those cranes and booms that you see on AEP trucks, et cetera. They have doubled their footprint and are basically increasing their gas load. Now, the new customers combined have added 600-plus new jobs to Southwest Virginia, which we're excited about. Okay, let's talk about a natural gas transfer station. So what this station does is basically takes gas off the interstate pipelines and into a local distribution system. It does that by reducing, by reducing the pressure because we operate at much lower pressures than the transmission lines. It measures, and it also measures and controls the flow of the gas. And I have some pictures of this, and I'll show you shortly. These systems, when they're in operation, do not emit any methane. The only time they emit methane is when we have to do an annual inspection there, where we do have to do a blowdown of a section of pipe. Now, to kind of put it in perspective, the amount of methanes that are released during our annual maintenance is, and this is according to the Journal of Dairy Science, it's equivalent to what five dairy cows would emit in one day. So to give you perspective on methane emissions, that's what it's equivalent to. Cost of station is a little over $2 million. It's considered property, so it'll be taxed as property, which will be increased taxes or revenues to the county. This is one of our stations located there, we call Clearbrook. It's off of 220 near Walmart. The original station was installed in 1960. This one was upgraded in 2016. And this is typically about the size of a station that's in our system. We operate about 10 of these in our system. It's pretty much equivalent to about the size of the screen for the most part. What you see in the light canopy here, that's East Tennessee's facility, and what's in the green canopy is back here is our facilities back there. This is our plantation station, and this will probably be similar to what we're proposing up there in Montgomery County within the Elliston area. As you can see, these stations are nice and compact. They put redundancies on these stations, so they have redundant regulation, redundant flow controls, redundant measure, and they do that to ensure that when this gas is transferred off the interstate transmission line, that's interstate, that it's delivered safely into our system. All stations are constructed and tested at the manufacturer, so they're done off-site. They're installed on skids, which are these metal skids down here. They're delivered and basically connected to the piping there, which significantly reduces the construction time at the site. This is a picture, and this was, and we was talking about it with the fencing that we have around there with the solid metal panels and a typical siding, so it's for visual, security, et cetera. And from that, and from a noise standpoint, these stations are designed so at the max flow rate, the noise inside the fence is equivalent to a hair dryer. So further away you get, the noise dissipates. So the closest resident to the station will be approximately 600 feet away, and they also will be about 100 feet below the station, so they will not hear anything come from the station when it's in operation. This is, this is a map of our existing system in Montgomery County. We do have the transfer station, we saw pictures up here, it's called the Elliston Station off of Break Road. The system extends to serve the high school, the elementary school to the south, and then to the north, it serves Row Furniture. Now, unfortunately, because of our restrictions and limitations on East Tennessee, we cannot add any companies that have any sort of significant load. We can interfere with residential customers, but there isn't any additional capacity there to go ahead and add a customer that has a significant natural gas load. The station we're proposing would be up here on the north end. Our intent is to run a pipe down here and tie it to the system. It'll do two things. It'll provide a back feed, so you'll have a two-way feed, which will make the system much more reliable. It'll also provide additional capacity to be able to provide natural gas supply to companies that have a significant gas need there. This is the proposed, a map of the proposed site, and you've kind of seen this. This red area would be what we consider the fencing there. That's the Montgomery County-Roanoke County line. It's wooded, and this would be the access road coming up to it. And this is the central plan that you all saw. The green would be the limits of disturbance there with the fenced-in area, and everything around it will be left in its natural wooded environment. And the reason we selected this site is because, because of this location, it's kind of way out of sight from the public. You can't see this from a 460. Its proximity to the Mountain Valley Pipeline and its relationship to our system will be able to tie into our system. We have reached agreements with the property owner for the sale of the land, as well as tentative agreements for the easement for the piping to connect to our distribution system. We have talked to all adjoining property owners to see if anybody had concerns, and there wasn't any. We have also, the one property owner that's the closest, when we approached him, not only did he not have any concerns, he was also interested in receiving natural gas service once this is installed. So he would actually be our first natural gas customer off this new line if it is approved. We have received approval from our ENS plan, for ENS plan, and we plan to hire a third-party inspection company to inspect our ENS controls for this project. Now, if you all have any engineering or design questions on the site, we have Brian Crossings here from Herden Profit available to answer any of those. We have reviewed all the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission, are in agreement with those conditions. We look forward to working with Montgomery County, and if this is approved, hopefully provide the necessary infrastructure for economic growth, as well as providing a low-cost energy option for your residents and businesses. Thank you for your time, and we welcome any questions that the board may have.
I'll start off with Supervisor King. Do you have any questions for the applicant or for the staff?
Just one question.
Yes.
The stations that you showed, you said probably would be the same one that you're going to put down there?
Yeah, the one that's... It'll be this size, and it'll look like this under the canopies in there.
That's what you put there?
Yes.
Okay.
Supervisor Fidjikowski.
Now, you've showed us pictures of the transfer station there on Break Road. It's right between two residences.
Yes.
Have you ever had any explosions at any of your transfer stations, or any other fires, or any other serious problems with that?
No, we have not, and we've had these stations in place ever since they put those transmission lines in since the 1950s.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Damots.
I'm going to ask a lot more questions than they did. So first, I wanted to ask Emily a question, or a series of questions. When does the board have to approve this? What is our timeline for approval?
With any action by the board on applications that I bring in, or rezonings or SGP's, by statute, you have to act within one year of when the application was submitted. So from today, that would be within the next nine months.
Okay, so sometime next summer, we would have to take action on this?
If you, if you maxed it out. I could give you a specific date, but I think we've had it about three months, so something like that, yes.
Okay, that's all I had for you. Thank you. I guess first, how do you measure demand? Or is it measured, you said you've had increased demand in our community. Is it measured? Is it commercial demand that you're measuring? Is it residential demand?
It's a combination of both.
How do you measure that?
Well, we measure it based on usage, sorry, usage as well as customer growth.
And then you mentioned that you wanted to increase the reliability of the system. What is unreliable about it right now?
The system is very reliable, but having that third source of natural gas come into our system, as you saw in the maps, East Tennessee, we're at the dead end of that system. So if anything were to happen upstream of there, basically, we would lose all that feed or portion of that feed coming into our system, which if it was an extremely cold winter day, we'd probably lose 30, 40% of our customers. So having that additional feed in there would improve the reliability and reduce those chances if something were to happen there.
Has anything ever happened to?
We've had some occasions where we've had pressure issues on East Tennessee. Fortunately, when those occurred, it hasn't been extremely cold. If it was extremely cold, it would have been to where we would have to basically turn off customers.
Will the proposed line run from the gate station into Roanoke and into Montgomery County?
Yes. Our current facilities that we're going to tie into is behind the water thories, Spring Hollow Reservoir, peaceful drive down there. We're actually going to put a T in the line right there around 460 with the Phase 2 of that to run over 800s and tie into that system.
How many new customers do you think would be able to, residential customers do you think would be able to come onboard in Montgomery County?
Yeah, let me ask. Paul, do we have a... Paul?
You probably need to come speak on the mic, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Paul Schneider, and I'm an engineer for Roanoke Gas. As far as customers in the existing Montgomery County station area, excuse me, we have about 90 customers currently, and I'm not exactly sure as far as the population density in that area, but if we take a look at our system map, you will see that we do have natural gas mains along most of the main residential streets in the area that we could use to serve any customers that currently live in that area. And as Mr. Garozzi mentioned previously, we would be able to serve some of those customers with the existing natural gas system, but we would not be able to serve a significant increase in residential customers, or we would not be able to serve any large industrial or commercial users in this area, like, for example, Row Furniture, if something similar were to want to move into that area, we would currently not be able to serve them.
So you don't know how many customers you could potentially have. It would just give you the ability to serve more customers if you chose to?
I do not have an exact number. We could provide that information to the board if you all would like that. We can get some more detailed information from our mapping department, but anyone who currently lives on a street with natural gas piping in the street could have service from Roanoke Gas within a matter of weeks.
Are any new pipes planned for construction?
As far as our distribution system, we routinely replace and maintain the pipes in, within our system as part of our annual maintenance plan, but we are kind of unable to expand much in this area without the additional pipeline capacity.
So if you were to get additional pipeline capacity, would you plan to build additional infrastructure to serve more customers?
Thank you for that, yes. We add about 10 to 15 miles of DMaine in our system each year. We've, out of those 600 that we get, there's probably another 300 to 400 that we can't provide service to just because they're, our facility's not close enough to supply. So with this, with this increased capacity, it allows us to expand and pick up additional customers, not only outside of our service territory, but also within.
Does Roanoke Gas pay for the installation and construction of new service lines? Sorry, hold on just one second. Let me review my notes. When does Roanoke Gas need to have this tap or gate station built? When, when would it make sense for it to be installed and running?
Now, some of the equipment for this gas station, it's 16 monthly time, so we would like to have it approved in a pretty timely manner, so we go ahead and put that out in order, which means we'd probably go to construction, probably start doing the grading stuff spring of next year, and probably have that station completed by late fall.
And then, I guess, there's been a lot of recent news of different permits that have been vacated or turned over for the Mountain Valley Pipeline. Additionally, the construction costs have skyrocketed, skyrocketed well beyond the estimates. I guess, do you have concerns? On my end, it doesn't seem like the pipeline is a done deal because so much is going on. There are so many...
Folks, we want each one of the supervisors to be able to be heard, to be able to ask questions. That means, and that's important, for them to be able to listen, to ask questions. We want folks to feel comfortable about coming up and addressing our board. And so with the applicant is up here speaking, we're going to give them the respect that they deserve. We're going to act like adults, okay?
So, back to what I was saying, in my opinion, and because of the recent court verdicts and stuff like that, it doesn't seem like the MVP is a guaranteed deal. I guess I'm really asking you, how critical is this that, or how critical is it that we approve something like this in the very near future, knowing that things could change in a few months from now and that pipeline could hopefully not be constructed at all? I mean, what's your timeline like if you say it's six to eight months and you're hoping for completion by late fall? It feels like to me that we might have some time on our side to watch what happens with the permits for the pipeline.
Pipeline is scheduled to go in service at the end of '19, and I actually wouldn't be up here asking for approval, or Roanoke Gas would not be making this investment, but we didn't feel it would be in service at that time, so.
Okay, and then, just a couple more. You mentioned something in your presentation about lowering greenhouse gas emissions by using natural gas. Has there been an industry comparison of, say, if... Has there been an industry comparison of, say, for example, coal-powered electric utility versus a fracked gas utility?
There has. I don't have that with me or off the top of my head. But the primary reason that they've kind of retired full fire plants, went to natural gas, is to reduce greenhouse emissions. And I can provide that to you. And we'll go ahead and get you that information. Now, when you talk about fracked gas, fracking has been going on since the late forties, early fifties. And just about everything in these pipelines is from fracking.
Right. So are there any? I guess, do we know what the long-term environmental impacts then of fracking are? And I've long said, as an opponent of the pipeline, that the base reason that I am opposed to the pipeline is because I'm opposed to fracking. I'm very concerned about the long-term environmental impacts. And, you know, there's additional seismic, I'm going to say that incorrectly, earthquake activity in areas where there's a lot of fracking. Is there any kind of measure of that that would, I guess, support your claim of reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, but also environmental impacts?
I'm not an expert in the drilling field. I could provide some studies that some of the associations have done on that, where they've shown a reduction in greenhouse gases, et cetera.
And that's it? That's all the questions that I had for right now?
Supervisor Biggs.
Okay, well Supervisor Demonts asked a lot of the questions that I had. I sort of want to follow up on a couple of things. Like, I'm also concerned about MVP having the permits, the three federal permits taken away. And I'm getting from your answer to Supervisor Demonts that you're feeling pretty confident that even though these things have happened, that the pipeline is going to go on through and you really want to be able to take advantage of that to expand your business. So one of the things I want to ask is, you made a comment about the Columbia and the East Tennessee gas lines not being able to provide anymore or expand anymore to you. And I want to know, is there documentation for that? Like, have they sent you something that has said that, hey, we can't give you anymore? Or how do we know that?
Yes, yes.
Is that something that we could get a copy of?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay.
That's firm capacity.
Yeah. And then the other thing, well, one of the other things, I want to follow up on Steve. When you're talking about, and I know you have an outstanding safety record, but have you ever dealt with a forty-two inch, you know, pipeline coming in and then having that transition?
No, we haven't dealt with a forty-two inch line.
So the ones that you've dealt with are, what, twenty-four and eight? And what else?
Those are the two that provide service to us, yes.
Those are the two. Okay. When you were going over, and this is one thing that sort of attracted my attention, the different companies, it seems like there's a lot of expansion north of Montgomery County. Like, it seems like it's in the Roanoke area, the Bodatot area. And to follow up on Supervisor Demonts, I would really like to see, you know, what kind of customer base would be in Montgomery County specifically, since you're asking to put the tap there. I would really like to see like how that's going to interplay with, you know, people wanting to use gas. Another thing that wasn't brought up, but it concerns solar, is that Corillion at New River Valley, they put in solar panels to help with their, you know, gas, or not their gas, but to help with their usage out there. And you were saying specifically that Virginia Tech and Corillion are going to require more gas. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go back to, I was reading through your information about the odorant that you're going to put. Now, does anything come out of that like all the time? Or is that just something that would come out if there was a leak? Or how does that work?
No, it's self-contained. We're required to odorize our natural gas. It puts kind of a rotten egg smell in it if there is a leak. So that you can detect it with a human scent, with a normal sense of smell. It's all self-contained. It's, they have odorizers or ejectors that as the flow of gas goes through the line, it measures that and administers the proper amount of odorant.
Okay, so then, if there was a leak, you would be notified some way?
Yeah, yeah.
And meanwhile, that would escape into the atmosphere because that's the way you're notified, I guess, right? Right. I have concerns about, specifically about the odorant that is used and the effects of that in the air, especially after everything came out this week from the UN about, you know, what's going on with the whole world. But I do have, I do have questions about that for later. Let me see what else I've got here. Oh, let's just say that this went through. I have a question. First of all, and I don't, this probably is more of an Emily thing. I didn't ever see a letter saying VDOT has gotten their situation together to, they're sending a review, reviewing it. Did they ever give you a letter saying it was done? Their review, Emily?
They provided comments. VDOT did provide us with comments. They don't actually do a formal review until there's an actual plan.
Okay, so that's the letter we got.
And their comments were the expansion of the entrance and then to just be mindful of the weight limit on the bridge.
Okay, now, that's the next question I have about this bridge. So if the bridge is in any way compromised, who pays for that? How are we going to judge if it's compromised with the concrete truck coming over and stuff? It said somebody would be on site to look at loads and that kind of thing. But what happens if the bridge is compromised?
I'm not sure what the process is if a bridge is compromised. I believe that's a VDOT, you know, purview. But knowing this far in advance what the weight limit is and coordinating with any applicant on such a project, that would probably be part of the approval process through VDOT. If they were able to obtain their permits, would be that someone would be available.
Thank you. I think that is all I have right now. And thank you so much for your answers and for bringing us further information. I really appreciate that.
Supervisor Butler?
There's some conversation in the public that, as well as, I believe, in some of our documentation, that the cost of this would double if we waited too long. Is that true?
The cost of the station?
Yeah.
No, I don't believe so. It wouldn't double, so.
And what kind of cost does Montgomery County have? Any?
No, no.
Okay, okay. All right, I've got a bunch of questions. So when I looked at your map of your present footprint plus Franklin County, it looks like you've got a fair amount of customers in my district, which is District A, which is the northeastern part of the county. And then, of course, it goes into Supervisor Fidjikowski's. But it doesn't go past halfway in Montgomery County, you know?
Where that is right there?
Right, right?
Yeah, that territory, Atmis Energy has a certificate to provide service for that.
So, do you have any ability to move west?
We do. For example, if there are customers that request natural gas in that area right there, and Atmis is not interested in providing service, we can approach State Corporation Commission about providing service in that area.
So does Atmis have access to the Mountain Valley Pipeline?
I'm not positive if they do or don't. I don't believe they do.
Do they have access to the East Tennessee line?
They do.
Do they have access to the Columbia Pipeline?
They don't. I believe everything they've got right now comes off of that East Tennessee line.
Okay. Are there any other pipelines that they have access to that serve our region?
That serve Montgomery County?
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I'd imagine you'd have good competitive information.
Yes.
I would think so. So for half of the county, or let's even say a third, you have ninety customers.
Yes.
Does that include Row?
It does include Row.
Row as one customer?
Yes.
Okay. How many commercial customers do you have in Montgomery County?
Hold on a second. We bring Paul back up, the engineer.
Hi, good evening. For this section of the system, Row Furniture would be considered a commercial customer as well as both the Eastern Montgomery Elementary and High School would be classified as commercial customers as well as, I don't have the specific information, but I believe there's several gas stations and convenience-type stores along Route eleven and four sixty that are also customers. And again, we can provide more detailed information if we're able to.
So when you say several gas stations and other businesses, would you say five more at most or twenty more at most?
I would say five to ten.
And so that brings us up to about fifteen or less commercial or industrial users?
That's correct.
And I would expect that there's probably none in the upper, my district, meaning the northeast part of commercial or industrial users up there. Is that correct?
That are served by Roanoke Gas?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. So that means we've got seventy-five residential users of, at least. So would you say most of them are in the Ellison area? Or are there quite a few up in my area, the northeastern part of the county?
Let me go ahead and go back to our map here. All of the residential and commercial customers of Roanoke Gas would be located adjacent to one of these either blue or purple pipelines in the area. And I believe those are all in Mr. Fidjikowski's district.
Okay, are there any lines up in my district?
Up in the northeast portion of the county? No, ma'am. We do not have any natural gas pipes.
Where are the closest lines up there?
The closest facilities we.
Could you go to the other map? Because you can't see my district on that map.
Currently, here is our service territory in Montgomery County. Our Ellison Lafayette system is right in this very eastern portion of the county, mainly along Route eleven and four sixty. We do not currently have any natural gas service in northeast Montgomery County. But with it being in our service territory, we would have to build additional facilities in that area and additional facilities, another similar station off of that pipeline in order to serve that area.
So you would need another tap up there? You wouldn't just?
Potential.
Bring it from the Ellison area? Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, we would have to evaluate what the potential load would be up there and then what customers would be up there to decide. But that tap should have enough capacity to extend the line, assuming, it depends how far away they would be, so.
But in order to get up to that, you have to go over at least one mountain range?
Yeah, and that would make it kind of cost prohibitive to run.
Gotcha.
Infrastructure.
So I'm wondering about the county, is that Roanoke County? I can't, I pay attention to my county, but like the Newcastle area.
Yeah, currently, there aren't, there is no.
So where's the, where's the nearest pipeline in that valley? I would call it like Mount Taber Valley or Craig Creek Road Valley or?
Um, there is.
Catalba Road Valley.
There is no pipeline up in there.
Is it all the way up to Bodatot County that you have the next lines?
Well, here's, this would be the closest transmission line is what you see up here.
I guess I'm talking about your lines?
Your lines?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have them up here, going up in Bodatot County. Oh, what is that?
You do understand what I'm talking about, like above eighty-one, so.
We do have some lines over there in Cherokee Hills, over in that area.
I'm not familiar with Cherokee Hills. What's that?
It's on the north side of eighty-one.
Is that Montgomery County or is that?
That's Roanoke County.
Okay. Okay. Could you reiterate how many Montgomery County customers that you would expect from this tap? Over the next five years?
Five years? Well, we would hope we would infill with whatever existing customers that are currently not hooked up to natural gas on that. But I think what it does is it creates the potential, if new industry wants to come into this area, because I know there are some nice areas in there that would attract new industry, that we would be able to offer them natural gas service, which today, currently, couldn't do it, especially if they had any sort of significant load right there.
Is there any new industry that you're aware of that is interested in moving into that part of the county?
Not that I'm aware of.
And if I'm familiar enough, and Steve, you can correct me, the Intermodal was like the last thing that was potentially going to go into your district. Have you heard of any other industrial, industries, commercial customers that might be coming?
No, they have not contacted me yet.
You mentioned the customers that you have now in that area, the residential customers, and that this would provide more opportunity for more residential customers. But you've already said that you have more capacity for residential customers from the East Tennessee line. So why do you need more gas if you still have the capacity from the East Tennessee line for additional residential customers?
We'll need a little bit of capacity here from Montgomery County for hopefully future, future loads that could potentially go in there. But we will need gas for our system as well, so.
So let's say that five years from now, some industry or commercial customer loves the Intermodal area and says, hey, you know, we'll come if we have natural gas, but we don't have natural gas. How quick could we get natural gas there? The six to eight months that you're talking about? As far as if it hurried up, went through the board and said, yeah, we're all in? How fast could you get natural gas down there? From MVP at that point? Say, five years from now?
Assuming the station was in place?
Nope, assuming the station was not in place.
It would probably be, I'm guessing, probably over a year, year, year and a half.
Okay. So if you had the tap, how many more Roanoke County customers do you expect to get?
If we had, if we had the tap, it would give us enough capacity probably to add another five to ten thousand customers on our system as a whole, so.
And that includes Franklin County also? The five to ten thousand customers?
Franklin County would be separate because there's a separate tap that comes off there for them, so.
So they have a tap already in the works?
Yes.
They've approved it?
It's in the process of hopefully being approved.
Sort of like this right now?
Yes.
Okay. So how many customers in Franklin County? Just do you expect?
We're projecting somewhere between approximately the potential for fifteen hundred customers there in Franklin County.
So you'll put in a tap for fifteen hundred customers? That's what you're saying?
We're putting in a tap to feed hopefully their new industrial park that's going in as well as running a line down to Rocky Mountain and provide natural gas service to those existing industrial and residential customers there.
So considering that, you know, you have marginal opportunity for customers in Montgomery County as compared to the five to ten thousand customers you potentially could have in Roanoke County, why are you, why are you doing this in Montgomery County and not Roanoke County?
Well, we're doing it in Montgomery County, one, because of the location is ideal because it puts that station kind of out of sight, puts it in an area where we actually have a landowner that we had an agreement to sell that property as well as the proximity to the pipeline, so.
So for the mumbles out in the audience, if you agree. So for the mumbles out in the audience, if you agree with something, you can raise your hands, please don't make any noises, if you disagree with something, put your thumb down if you so choose, I just don't want, we don't want any noises from the gallery, if you would be so kind. So, in all of RoNoCounty, there is no place that would be just as good for this tap, is that what you're saying?
There's not a location that'll be within close proximity to our facilities where the Mountain Valley Pipeline goes, in RoNoCounty, so.
In the southwestern part of RoNoCounty?
Yeah, when you did down there, yeah.
On the other side of 81, 460, well, how many miles do you have there, 10 or 20? And you're saying there are no spaces in RoNoCounty to have this tap?
There are no spaces that would put it as close to our facilities, and in relationship to the Mountain Valley Pipeline. So you would have to run significantly greater amount of pipe in order to feed it into our system.
So the system that you're talking about is the one in Ellison, is that correct?
Well, it's one in Ellison, as well as the one over there in RoNoCounty behind Spring Hollow, so.
Okay, so there's nothing behind Spring Hollow that is just as good as what is in Ellison?
Not, not behind Spring Hollow, no.
Or somewhere, or somewhere near Spring Hollow, that's just as good as this space?
I mean, the facilities that I'm talking about that we're tying into, that's the very end of our system in RoNoCounty, so there's nothing closer than that, so.
But you don't have to be at the end of the line to tap into MVP. I don't know if you can zoom in, could you zoom in there?
Let me try and zoom in a little bit here.
And I apologize, I really don't know RoNoCounty exceptionally well, let alone where Spring Hollow is, I mean, I know where Spring Hollow is, but I don't know where it is in relation-
Let me go back to our, I gotta zoom in. Our local map here. The, the water treatment plant for Spring Hollow, and the Adams Asphalt Plant are two to three miles east along Route 460, just south of Route 460 there, and those are currently our furthest, most west customers in Montgomery County. Excuse me, yes, in RoNoCounty. I believe you're trying to ask us why we could not pick another location along Mountain Valley Pipeline, the answer to that is, we would then have to install our pipes to go from that station to the customers, and at this time, those other locations are currently cost prohibitive to, due to the low population of the area, there's not something like a Route 460 that is, has a significant potential for commercial and industrial development, and installing a new section of our system to a low-density area is very cost prohibitive.
So, there is no connection between this purple and blue line, and anything in RoNoCounty, you're saying?
That's correct, there's, they're currently two separate systems.
So, you're gonna have to build a pipe, you know, lay some pipe to get it to RoNo, to get to your 5,000 to 10,000 customers, what, I don't understand what you're talking about.
We can provide some additional maps to the board, to help them understand that connection. We currently have plastic piping that runs, plastic and steel piping that runs along from 460, from the Adams Asphalt and Water Treatment Plant customers, all the way into Salem, and there's another, there's another East Tennessee interconnection site that the Planning Commission visited with us, that is along, I believe it's, or Mountain Road, we can get some more information on that connection, and maybe provide the board some more context on that.
I guess I'd like to see some geography of where the Mountain Valley Pipeline flows through RoNoCounty, I know we're here to talk about Montgomery County, but it just seems to me that you're taking gas from one place, and still having to transport it, and build additional lines to get it to where you really want to be, which is your customer base in RoNoCounty. I think I'm understanding that correctly.
Yeah, I mean, that location is, would be the closest proximity where we have to extend lines to the end of our system, to tie into that station to provide gas back through there. As you go farther away, it gets cost prohibitive, so.
How do you estimate prospective customers? How did you come up with 5,000 to 10,000 in RoNoCounty, and, you know, what I call marginal in Montgomery County?
Well, based on our saturation studies that we do, we looked at, we basically look at what customers we have connected, and what customers are available to connect, and that's where we're getting those figures from, so.
So, why aren't more people connected in the Ellison area, if the lines are there? You basically only have, if I'm doing my math right, 75 customers in that area, how many could you have in that area?
You don't have to tell the customer count.
I mean, why wouldn't they be getting your gas now, if they wanted it?
If they wanted it, we would provide it to them, so.
Yeah, so they don't want it, is basically what you're saying?
I can't answer the question, so.
So why would more gas mean that you would have more customers if they could have it, and they, they're choosing not to get it right now?
I mean, we've seen continual growth on our system, and we're averaging about 600 customers a year additions, as well as you've seen that kind of the big industrial growth that's occurring on our system. That, that trend has continued for the last 15, 20 years, and we anticipate to continue.
And it's all been in Bodatack County?
Yeah, no, it's across our whole system, so, I can't give specific numbers for each county, it's across our whole system.
It would be great to know, Montgomery County, your expectation of specific growth-
We can provide that for you.
That you can't have now. Are you putting in more, you said you are putting in more lines, so you can get to more customers in Montgomery County?
We're gonna put in another line that would come back and actually backfeed the system.
So, no more houses, residences would be served, you're just providing more capacity?
Well, more could be served, because whatever we pass by with that new line-
Okay.
-would have the probability of serving.
Okay. So, I'm not sure if I followed your math correctly, you say you had 60,000 customers, and you have an average of 600 new customers, that's 1%, not 2.1%, but I'm not sure if I'm doing the math correctly.
If you are, those are, those are net customers, we take a customer count at the end of a fiscal year, which is the end of September, typically, we have quite a few customers that come off due to non-payment, so, and then they come back on and get called, so.
So, like you mentioned, that ATMOs has the rights to do, provide the gas in the western part of our county?
Correct.
Do they have access to your district at all?
No, they don't.
You don't let them, you just go ahead and serve everybody that, like you mentioned, oh, they might, if they don't want to serve people in their area, we could potentially go into their area, is it, have they ever gone into your area?
No, they have not, not to the best of my knowledge, so.
So, there were some comments that you made about, if it got really cold, like potentially 30 to 40% loss of customers during a cold snap or something, could you talk about that for a second?
Yes, because during extremely cold periods, about 60% of our supply comes from Columbia, about 40% comes off that East Tennessee line, and as I stated, that's kind of a one-way feed, so, typically, we're at the end of the soda straw, we're the dead ends of RoNo, so if something happens upstream, say, something happens to that line in Blacksburg, etc., everything downstream there, we would end up, they wouldn't be able to get gas to us, which means all the customers that we are feeding off that system, we would potentially lose.
So, you kept talking about the reliability of your gas-
Correct.
...and your system, so why would it ever not be available? Has it ever not been available?
We have had periods, not during extremely cold periods, where, as I stated, that we have, they've had some problems down on their ends with control of gas, etc., we've seen significant reduction of pressure, now we were able to manage that, but if it would have been on an extremely cold period, we would have had to curtail or turn customers off, so.
So, is nothing to do with your system, has everything to do with the reliability of their system, is that the truth?
Correct.
So in, in this case, you would have to rely on MVP to be as reliable as it needs to be, so that your system could be as reliable-
Correct.
...as necessary, and you have 1,000% confidence that MVP is as reliable as you need them to be?
Yes.
Have you ever worked with the organizations that are part of MVP before?
No, I have not.
So what makes you believe that they're gonna be as reliable as the other two systems that you work with?
Well, well, I mean, they're EQT organization, which owns, I believe, about 1,000 miles of transmission lines up in the northeast, and in order to, to operate and be certificated to do transmission line, they have to show that they can be reliable, etc. So, our firm belief would be that if they, you know, that line goes in, it goes into service, which we all firmly believe, that it will happen at the end of 2019, that they will be a provider, and be able to provide a service reliably, just like the other ones do, except there's always, there could be something that always happens, and more of the concern is on East Tennessee, because we do not have that two-way feed capability. Gas cannot flow in both directions, it only flows in one, so if something happens, that interruption, you can't get gas back there. Where on the MVP line, you do have that capability of moving gas back and forth, so.
But from my understanding, MVP has never done a 42-inch pipeline before, is that true?
I'm about 100% positive of that, but.
So, the reliability of their pipes up in the north, northeast, you can extrapolate, you know, their successes there, to something that they've never done before, and have confidence that it will be as reliable as you need it to be?
I mean, the 42-inch pipeline is designed for the capacity that that line's gonna carry. As far as I'm concerned, it's, it'll be just as reliable as the other lines that have been in place since the 50s and 60s. Now, the tap that we're getting off that line, it'll be a tap that comes off, it won't be 42 inches coming over to us, it'll be a much smaller pipe, so.
So it's the reliability of your, and I could get this wrong, 8-inch lines versus your 24-inch lines, am I getting those numbers correct?
Those are correct.
Are exactly the same, the reliability of both of those lines?
The Columbia line is, would be much more reliable than the East Tennessee line, just from a standpoint, it has two-way feed capability, so if there was an issue, they can get flows from both directions.
Okay. So if Virginia Tech and Corillian weren't able to get this gas, what would they do?
I'm not sure exactly, to be honest with you. We feed Corillian, we feed most of their research center, we're gonna feed this expansion, and they have been requested to provide service for future expansions.
But what if we don't approve it, how are you gonna, how are you gonna feed it? Because you have no more capacity.
Well, we would have to basically tell them we cannot serve anything in the future, so, at some point in the future, so.
Okay. So, AEP, or Dominion Energy, doing solar fields and all this kind of stuff, you guys can only do gas, is that correct? Or can you do solar too?
We have, we have the opportunity to do energy projects in general, so.
Do you have any solar fields?
No, we do not.
Do you have any plans of doing solar fields?
No, not at this time.
So when you say redundancy, is that, and I apologize, because I haven't been an engineer for a while, but is it just like double redundancy, or is it triple redundancy? What does redundant really mean?
It's usually double or triple, for example, for regulators, they have a monitoring system, so they have a worker and a monitor, and sometimes a second monitor there, so the first one, something happens, the first one, the second one will catch it, and the third one will catch it if needed, plus they also have multiple runs in those stations, that you can switch one over to the other if needed, so.
And so, what would, what kind of redundancy would we have at our station?
Now, I believe this one is designed to have double redundancy, as well as multiple runs, so you can switch back and forth, so.
What kind of, and this is just kind of left-field question, homeland security protection do you have for, you know, a white truck rolling up next to the fence, and all of a sudden?
These stations are monitored 24/7, we have the security on the fence, we also have, everything in there is locked, so they can't manually be turned, everything is returned remotely electronically, so that's the security we have at those stations, we do have lighting that's manual, that will shine down on that stations, and pretty much, if anything happens at that station, we will see it remotely, so.
And so, we'll move on from that, hold on a second. So, the neighbor of this proposed station said that he wanted to be the first customer, are you saying that there's no pipe near his property at this time, that he could be a customer at this time?
Correct.
Okay. In any of your pipelines, have you ever had any leaks?
Yes, we have, yeah.
Can you talk to us what, what that looks like, or what that's like?
Most of the leaks, well, most of the leaks were associated with the low-pressure system, that we have pretty much replaced all that since 2016, we've eliminated all that. A lot of the old cast iron, those old bell and stick of joints that operated at less than a pound of pressure, over time, those things would leak and migrate, you know, we leak survey our, our system based on PHMS or federal regulations, sometimes it's done annually, sometimes we're done every three years, we grade the leaks according to the regulations, and then repair any, leak of any substance immediately, and monitor all the leaks, like little fuzz leaks that are on meters, etc., on an annual basis.
Have you had any leaks since you made those modifications?
Not on our low-pressure system, because that's all been completely eliminated with branded pipe, so.
But, on any part of your whole system, have you had any leaks since 2016, since you made that modification?
On the other parts of our system that are older, yeah, we do have, tend to have leaks from time to time, yes.
And what is that, I mean, do people smell the leak because of that odorant, do, what's that like?
Typically, well, they smell it and they'll call it, or when we do our leak surveys, we'll find varying percentages of leaks, and then go investigate, so.
And how do you fix it, what's a typical fix for a leak?
Now, the fix is either digging down or repairing a pipe, which is typically what you do, or replacing fittings on the meter set, etc., so, it's usually where you have threaded fittings going into a set. So it's usually where you have threaded fittings going into a set.
Where, just curious, where's the tap going to be in Franklin County?
Um, in their new business park.
Can you show in that other map, like, where it might be?
It'll be approximately right about here.
Okay.
So wherever two-twenty is, it'll be right off that, two-twenty.
Oh, okay. So at one point in time, MVP thought that they were going to be in production by the end of 2018, and now it's the end of 2019. Why would you think that it's going to be in production at, at the end of 2019?
Um, I believe it'll be in service at the end of 2019, based on all the information I have, so, yes.
Piggybacking on Supervisor Demott's question about fracking, sure, fracking's been happening since the nineteen-fifties or before, but since George Bush passed his legislation, the amount of fracking that's happening now is probably more than a hundred-fold. Would you agree?
I would have, I figured we're probably pretty close, yes.
So the amount of environmental impact would be substantially more? Is that correct?
That I don't know, because I don't, we're not involved with any of the drilling. I mean, that's just not our thing, so...
Are we going to ask questions about something this man doesn't know anything about?
I don't know.
He doesn't, he doesn't frack for gas.
I don't know what he doesn't know.
And how does it relate to what we're here for?
Well, maybe we don't want to create more opportunity for demand, so that more fracking can actually occur.
But we're here for a gate station.
Uh huh. Which will provide, he said, up to five to ten thousand more customers' demands.
Yet, for a gate station, we're not, we're not here to approve or disapprove of fracking.
We're here to approve the facility, to get the fracked gas to additional customers.
Now, I think you're questioning, this has gotten way out of bounds, and you need to kind of reel it back in to what we're here for.
Noises, please, no noises. MVP has been planning on this pipeline for a long time. Have you always wanted to have a tap in this location from the beginning?
Well, we wanted to have a tap in this general area. We didn't decide officially on that tap until they had their final route determined, so, because it did, it did slide a little bit in that particular area.
Was it ever on the Roanoke side?
No, it was always on Montgomery County side.
How does your technology change from a twenty-four inch to a forty-two inch? What's, what's the difference in your station?
Um, the station would be the same whether it's a forty-two inch, a twenty-four inch, an eight inch. The stations are designed based on the capacity you're planning to receive off that pipeline.
Perfect.
So all stations are designed accordingly, so...
So the station, where is the odor put in? Is it put in, like, as soon as you get the gas from MVP, or somewhere down the line in your station?
It's put in, in that fenced area on one of the meter runs there. So as the gas flows through and is pressurized down, so we reduce the pressure, it's injected right in there.
So after it's reduced, then it's put in?
After it's reduced, yeah, because we're measuring the flow going through there, so when it goes to measurement, that's where it's injected in there.
Great. That's all my questions, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd. Only one. Just, just for information, are you, do you have any idea what the difference in pressures are between your eight, your twenty-four, and a forty-two, the high pressure?
Um, the twenty-four inch, I believe, operates at twelve-hundred-and-fifty PSI. The eight inch, I believe, operates at, Paul, what is it, eight-hundred PSI, roughly? Eight-hundred PSI. And the forty-two inch can operate up to about fourteen-hundred PSI.
Okay, that's all I have.
I have just a few questions. Thank you. I believe there's a question about cost-benefit of installing it now. Is there a cost-benefit of installing the tap while the pipeline is being constructed?
I mean, the cost-benefit is, well, answer that is yes, because we want to have that in place, so when the pipeline does go into service, we connect it and start taking the gas off of it, so...
Is there an approximate amount, it's going to cost you three-hundred thousand now to install it, versus i- if it's during construction? And then while it's in operation, I guess it would be more complicated and more expensive?
If it goes into operation, it'll increase the price probably, I'm guessing a couple hundred thousand. I don't know exactly, but it'd be a couple hundred thousand more to do it, so...
During the presentation at the planning commission, you were here, I believe, another gentleman was here on, on, around a gas behalf. They talked about the percentages that you actually almost, I guess, get from the taps. There's a give-or-take percentage, and you're actually selling, I guess, more gas than you're getting under a technical, and it was difficult for me to understand. It was like, the gas that you buy, there was a two percent give-or-take on one side or the other of the gas that you're receiving, and then you were selling that gas. And I was trying to understand what, what he was trying to convey, and I may, there was a couple of the other gentlemen that were here, and they may understand better. And, no, no, that's, I'm working here, and so I just wanted to clarify, I thought it was an important point for my fellow supervisors to hear.
Thank you, Chairman Tuck. I was present at the last meeting, where Mr. Schockley, our Vice President of Operations, mentioned that subject. The American Gas Association Industry Standards requires all of our natural gas meters from all of our customers to be accurate within a plus or minus two percent calibration, as well as all of our meters that we receive gas from the interstate pipelines. And the point on the subject that Mr. Schockley was trying to make is that we have a very, very small amount of leakage on our system. While we do not measure the individual leaks as they occur, because we are working quickly to safely repair them, when you look at the total volume of gas for the year, that leakage volume is very, very small, to where you cannot detect it within that calibration range of meters.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I was, I live in Walton, so I'm aware that there was a tap that was put in place for the arsenal.
Correct.
And that is coming off of that Tennessee line.
East Tennessee line.
And the arsenal has gone away from coal, as I understand it, to reduce their emissions and gone on natural gas. How has that affected the gas supply on that East Tennessee line?
Um, well, basically, the Atlas must have had a contract for that supply. Now, we have talked to East Tennessee over the past several years about additional supply on that line, and basically, we were, we were told that there was no more capacity. So, so what you have is all the firm capacity on that line, which is what you, what you have to have contracted to guarantee that it's delivered to you during the cold periods, to be able to maintain your customers, your firm customers, which is your residential, small commercials, et cetera. Industrial customers, we tend to turn, we have to interrupt those during really cold periods there.
And he mentioned that, that there were several companies that choose to go on interruptable services in really cold periods of time.
Correct.
Can you, do you recall, or do you know what, is there any specifics that are set up, designed to be on interruptable services?
Now, they have to have a secondary fuel supply, so in other words, they have to have backup for either using propane or fuel oil, et cetera, to be able to switch their equipment over from natural gas to that source.
And they get a price break if they sign up for interruptable services?
They do, they do.
Sir, thank you very much for being here. Is there any other questions? Supervisor Biggs?
Yes, can we just clarify the information that is going to come back to us from all the questions that were raised?
I'm sure he's going to, well, I imagine we'll get an email from him, and we can distribute it amongst everyone.
So you have it down, like, the documentation and the, and the growth of, okay, okay, so we'll get that back. Thank you.
I have a question, just for, for the clarification about the cost in the future. So if you didn't have it done now, and the pipeline was in, it would cost you more, a couple more hundred thousand dollars, and so why is that?
It'll cost, if you don't have a facility now, and have to come back and tap that line in the future, it's a higher cost, because it's under working pressure versus having it done when construction is occurring. The other thing is, equipment costs, et cetera, those are all increasing as well, so is labor. So as a result of that, you know, whether you wait a year from now, et cetera, you are going to see elevated costs associated with it, so...
But when you tap, the gas actually isn't going through, they shut down the line, so you can...
No, they, they hot-tap it, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, which requires specialized equipment, specialized crews, et cetera, yeah.
Do you hot-tap very often?
Um, we tap our distribution lines that are under much lower pressures, but it's a pretty common practice in the transmission industry. For, like, these lines that have been in the fifties and sixties, they don't shut it down. They'll go in there, tap them if they have the capacity available to do that, so...
Interesting.
All right. Thank you. All right, folks, I tell you what, we're going to try to move on tonight, but my fellow supervisors will take a five-minute break. I am, we're, we're going to get back started when that clock says nine. Five minutes. Please use the microphone when speaking. Please direct your comments to the chair or members of the board, not to the audience or staff. This is our time to listen to you. We will not be answering your questions during these hearings. We'll ask the audience, refrain from clapping or commenting between speakers, so that we may clearly hear the next speaker. Please leave any written statements with the clerk. And now, I'm having to read folks' handwriting, and so some of the names I may mispronounce, and I apologize. The first speaker that looks like, I want to make sure I've got that in the right order, is Alan Baker, and the next speaker is Frida, is it Cark?
Cathcart.
Cathcart. Is Alan Baker here? Yes, and, um, miss, and it's Cathcart. Cathcart, ma'am, would you please come forward and just have a seat in front of us? Sir, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Alan Baker, and I'm at 201 Allegheny Street in Blacksburg, Virginia.
I apologize, I didn't see the R on your...
That's right. So there's obviously a lot of issues to consider when evaluating this, this station, and one of the things that I had thought of before that's already been touched on is, you know, do we want to approve something that is, in my eyes, not necessarily a sure thing? It's sort of been touched on, you know, there's been concerns about the MVP. Do we want to basically have this when that might not, not actually be an actuality? I understand that there's definitely some customers that can be gained, and it sounds like it's sort of incidental to Montgomery County as far as the numbers of customers, but my sort of opinion here would be to sort of delay and wait, and, and take a wait-and-see approach, so see, see what happens with the MVP, see if it gets approved, not approved, whatever, and then reevaluate at that time, so we actually know what we're dealing with, if it's going to be a prudent step or necessary at all. And that's sort of my thoughts on the subject. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And the next speaker is Henry Bryan. Yes, ma'am, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Can I ask a question first? Is, is, what's this light's name?
Um, you're, you're given five minutes. The yellow light will come on when you're getting towards the end of your time, and then when the red light comes on, it will beep. Typically, I allow you to finish the sentence, but I don't let, allow you to finish a paragraph.
So when the yellow light comes on, how much time is left at that point?
I think it's a minute.
Okay, that just helps me.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, okay, appreciate that.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
All right, great. My name is Frida Cathcart, and my address is 2516 Sweetfriar Avenue, Roanoke, Virginia. I'm an investor, I live on investments, and two of the stocks that I'm invested in is Berkshire Hathaway, which is Warren Buffett's company, that owns Berkshire Hathaway Energy. Right now, they are fifty percent renewable in Iowa, on track to be a hundred percent renewable by 2021. I also have investments in SCANA, which is an energy utility down in South Carolina. And they have run into a lot of trouble down there, where they made investments by going with nuclear energy. They had invested nine billion dollars in a nuclear plant called the V.C. Summer Plant, where it got, it kept costing more and more. The workers were complaining at the time, saying they weren't doing a good job. One of the architects, engineers went bankrupt, Westinghouse, and SCANA pulled out at nine billion dollars of stranded assets. There's eighteen current lawsuits going on right now in South Carolina with Ray Peter shareholders and other stakeholders with what's unfolding down there. In Georgia, they were met with the same thing. They kept building their nuclear plant, they're proceeding, and right now, they're twenty-seven billion dollars, and they're still going forward. So I bring those up as examples of when utilities doing the best they can with the information they have, make decisions that sometimes don't turn out very well. And it's something that we need to be aware of, especially with the Mountain Valley Pipeline that's using precision pipeline builders, that has current lawsuits against them, that have had judgments brought against them. We've seen their sloppy work that they've been doing here in our region, how they've been hurting our order rates, how they have been negligent, how they have been irresponsible, and it's something that's a deep concern to all the people in our region. I want to make sure that people know I have no stock in the Mountain Valley Pipeline. I think it's really important to be aware that Roanoke Gas, however, does have stock, that they bought into the Mountain Valley Pipeline, they have a percentage of it, and that's important to know for conflict of interest. Roanoke Gas mentioned Corillian as a reason to have more capacity down in Roanoke. Roanoke has, we're excited about all the businesses being brought there, but we've lost a lot of business, we lost Norfolk and Southern, and just recently, the GE plant is closed down. And GE used to make the infrastructure for natural gas plants. The fact of them closing down is indication that it's a dying industry. If there was a lot of hope and vibrancy in the natural gas industry, GE would be thriving instead of shutting down. In the August edition of the Virginia Business Magazine, there was an article about solar, where in Northern Virginia, Amazon, Google, and Microsoft are insisting on renewable energy in order to locate their businesses there. Frank Knapp, who's the CEO and President of the South Carolina Small Business Chamber of Commerce, recently had a press conference, we called out Dominion for misleading the public, and said that Virginia was paying for an unnecessary pipeline, and that South Carolina would not pay for any more capital products that weren't needed. And that's really important, because Mountain Valley Pipeline is going to make the cost of gas more expensive for their customers, and I am a customer of Roanoke Gas. A couple of years ago, we replaced our natural gas furnace and water heater with a high-efficiency one, that's about twenty percent, uses twenty percent of what it used to, to heat our home. And last year, with a very cold winter, I can't remember it building more than a hundred and fifty dollars. So we are becoming more energy efficient, and right now, there's an economic disruption with storage batteries, where Tesla installed these giant batteries in December of last year in Australia, and they did a study in May that reduced their energy costs by ninety percent. So the future is renewable. So the future is renewable. We need to get ahead. If Montgomery County wants to attract the businesses, industry, technology, and residents to this area, renewables is the way, and this gate station is not. I hope that you will vote no on this application or at the very least delay it, and I greatly appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Mr. Bryant, and then the next speaker is Mary Ann Capes.
My name is Henry Bryant. I live at 6585 Stone's Keep Lane. I actually named the road Stone's Keep Lane. A stone keep is the strongest part of a castle. It's the interior, it's the last stand. You are our last stand in this. Like I said, I reside on Stone's Keep Lane in Roanoke County, which borders Stone's Keep Lane in Montgomery County. I own the business also in Elliston, in Montgomery County. I own stock in Roanoke Gas. As a resident, landowner, and stockholder, I'm asking you to please to table or deny the special use permit. Reuniting the property on Stone's Keep Lane for Roanoke Gas to tap into the Mountain Valley Pipeline is not a good idea. Stone's Keep Lane is already at overcapacity on traffic. There's industry already on the Roanoke County side. The bridge is rated at 20 tons. The dump trucks that, the pipeline people are already taking across the bridge at Stone's Keep Lane exceed 20 tons, and there's nobody checking anything. They're driving recklessly up through there for their construction, and I don't feel like Roanoke Gas would be any better, probably, depending on who their contractors are. According to my research, these caps are notorious for releasing cancer-causing agents into the atmosphere and what are the long-term effects on the area from these releases. Could the vibration from the railroad tracks being so close impact these pipes and that facility? My house is a couple hundred yards from the railroad tracks, and there's fissures and cracks in my home from vibration through the years from the railroad. I want my grandchildren to grow up in an area that has clean air, clean water, and good facilities to grow up in. In my opinion, the property, the current property, the current, the property is currently properly zoned and should retain that zoning and not have a special use permit. Frequently, East Montgomery and West Kent, Roanoke County citizens are treated like bastard children. These areas are being forced to accept whatever is shoved down their throats. Please acknowledge that we are citizens of value. Don't let special interests, corporate mega lists, overrule the humble citizen's interests. Please deny or table this special use permit for at least six months. Thank you.
Ms. Capes, and then the next speaker is, looks like it's Kyle Eens.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Mary Ann Capes, 26022732 Sugar Grove Road, Christiansburg, Virginia. I am indeed part of District C of this area under evaluation here. First, I'd like to acknowledge and appreciate the Board of Supervisors for the resolution a few years ago rejecting the Mountain Valley Pipeline. I think that all the things that have occurred in the recent time of construction has proven that was a great decision, and I applaud you for it. Thank you. Another point I'd like to make is that I'd appreciate it if we kept the comprehensive plan in place, that that is, is more of a area of development for, as it was declared to be in the original comprehensive plan, and not vary from that. I think the Mountain Valley Pipeline is very speculative at this point in, in light of all of the rulings that we're hearing about, and that this area will be detrimental with the Mountain Valley Pipeline for new development. I don't know of anyone or any business that I know of would want to move next to or within a few miles of this high-pressure, high-velocity gas pipeline. Getting into some of the specifics about the application, I feel that there are some inadequacies, and it's incomplete. Many of the points were brought up here in this discussion by the board, and this is a unique gate station, being 42-inch pipeline and higher pressures. My curiosity, being an equipment-type person, is will there be any unique equipment required, like a unique, custom-made, one-of-a-kind gas regulator, perhaps? There may be, and we should know what that is. I would like to see in the application, complete schematics of the system, how it operates, operating and maintenance manuals that include the compounds, the frequency, and volumes of any discharge or any waste stream on an annual basis, and that the permit package should also include detailed information, specific numbers as to what we danced around here for a while, the last couple of hours, the connector fee. It's my understanding from a meeting that I had with my supervisor, specific numbers are out there and given, that were given to us, and out of consideration for the business players here, I think that that needs to be part of the package. If it's X, then it's X times two, then it's X times three. Those numbers need to be fully disclosed because those are clearly significant numbers for making a decision on when this pipe, I mean, this gate station would or would not be approved. I see Roanoke Gas as being a very fine company with a lot of responsibility and have good practices, and that really, it is a minor point relative to the, the larger Mountain Valley Pipeline. So if that didn't exist, we wouldn't be having this conversation. In the Planning Commission meeting, there was one vote against this, that there was not adequate notice given. So there's a couple of inadequacies here right out of the gate, and the biggest one being details about the equipment and engineering specifications, plans, and submittals on equipment should be given in this application before it approved. And I recommend that we take all the time necessary, that the law allows, to consider this because it is the biggest thing that's ever hit this county, in my opinion, and I've been here over 30 years. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Colleen, and then the speaker after that is Kimberly Homer.
Yes, my name is Colleen. I live at 7325 Cove Harbor Road, and the road conditions up there are very, very unsafe. We have two bridges up there. I used to have weight limit signs on them. The weight limit signs has disappeared in the last couple of years. The bridges are coming undone. You can go across them in a regular vehicle, and they start rattling and kind of, we have pump trucks from Terminating Company bringing pulpwood out of the mountains up by our core Mountain Valley Pipeline is cut. And anyway, in front of my house, after this first hurricane came through, there was a washout in front of my house in my driveway that I had been in touch with Mr. Paul Brown with the V-Dot over here in Christiansburg. I had spoken with him several times about getting someone to come and fix and repair the road. Well, I had had to take it up on myself to go to Sisson and Ryan and buy gravel and push it up and under the pavement or into a big heavy truck, school bus, whatever gets close to it. It's for a canyon. And we need a couple of engineers to call up and evaluate this road because after this Mountain Valley Pipeline starts coming in and bringing in heavy equipment, these bridges are gonna crush under them. So please, I would advise and ask you please to look into this matter and have engineers to come and look at this road in Cove Harbor and evaluate the weight limit on those bridges. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. After Ms. Homer, the next, it looks like, is either Doug Chancey.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Kimberly Homer. I live at 222 Price Street in Blacksford. I've been an engineer at Virginia Tech for 30 years, and I've been Meredith Novak's cousin for longer than that. And I asked Meredith, you know, are you gonna be mad at me when I speak out against this? And she said no, she wouldn't be mad at me. And, you know, the easement is already going through her property, and Roanoke Gas came to her, and she said she would really rather see something renewable there, but she didn't feel like she had much choice. She's an engineer too. She doesn't have a job in Montgomery County. She, that's why she lives in Salem. What, what I would like to propose, I mean, I understand that a special use permit can be, can be granted for, you know, the Elliston-Lafayette areas targeted for growth and industrial, commercial, and residential development, and the provision of adequate supplies and utilities is an essential element of the infrastructure. I would ask you to consider that electricity is the thing that everybody needs. You can do without gas if you've got electricity. We, we need more electricity. We need more jobs, especially in Eastern Montgomery County. We, we need to set a good example for our public schools. In Bath County, there is a solar farm, and they're generating megawatts of electricity with solar, and it makes a lot of sense to do it with schools. Their kids are learning how to, you know, how to work with stuff like that. And, and they talked about, let's see, the Eldor plant that just opened up in Bodatot County. They actually make parts for electric cars. So one of the reasons they wanted to be in Bodatot County is because there's a market for electric cars there. They, and there are universities, and so they can hire engineers who are local. That's what they want. I mean, we have that too. We have the university that's local. We have smart people here. We have people who work hard. I think we just need to create the climate for them. We could build, you know, the, the property that, that Meredith has, the three acres, we could generate over a megawatt of electricity with solar, and we could put, it could be a farm. It could have goats under it, you know? It could have industrial land. There's all kinds of stuff that it could have. They're, and it's facing south. So I, I just hope that you would, like, slow down on considering the gate station, give it a little bit of time, and think about whether there might be something better for that site and better for Eastern Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Chancey, Tina Badger. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes, sir.
My name is Doug Chancey. I live at 2068 Lusters Gate Road in Montgomery County. And I'd like to congratulate the council on their award this year for taking care of our bets. I would encourage you to try and work towards the award next year for the most solar panels and alternative energy put on government buildings here in Montgomery County, including Virginia Tech and Corillian. I'm not a scientist. I'm just a citizen trying to stop this pipeline. And I probably will talk in generalities, if you don't mind. Because we say that fracking has been here since the 40s and 50s. Well, nuclear weapons have been here since the 40s and 50s, and I don't know that they've really improved our world. So I don't think this gate station is gonna improve anybody's world. The, the reason I'm against the Valley Pipeline is because very presently, as our counselor pointed out, the UN has just come out with another climate change report that lets us know that unless we take drastic action and stand up to these billion-dollar corporations, they're gonna continue to do these egregious environmental degradations in our communities all over the country and all over the world. But I'm, the reason fracking is associated with this is because it's bringing America to having the most natural gas in the world, whatever cost. So I encourage you to please reconsider this fossil fuel called natural gas. You know, Roanoke County, Roanoke Gas is an old company, 1888. Well, in 1888, the people that were running wagons and horses were crying, "It won't work," you know? So we need to move on. We need to move on from these fossils fuels. You're beating a dead horse letting these people come through our communities. I stood up before you three or four times before this pipeline started. I begged you to help stop it, to tell our governor to stop this pipeline. You can still do it. And start doing the right thing for the 21st century in our children and our grandchildren, and put solar panels on these government buildings in our county. It's a beautiful pet hospital. Does it have solar bil, solar panels on it? No, it does not, as far as I know. So please do not allow this gate station to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker, I'm looking to the county administrator to help me pronounce that.
It's a circle and a N and a B?
It, it does, or?
I'll set it forward.
Okay.
We'll let you say it. You have a couple minutes.
I'm Southwest Virginia.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Tina Badger. I live at 4181 Bluebird Drive in Elliston, Virginia, and I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come here and speak out on this special use permit for the Roanoke Gas gate station. And just in case anybody didn't know, I wanted just to make everybody aware that Roanoke Gas does own a 1% interest in the Mountain Valley Pipeline, so it's not like they don't have some interest in making sure this pipeline gets to go through. I went out and canvassed a couple of weeks ago before the Planning Commission on hearing on the special use permit. I knocked on doors in the village of Lafette, and every person that I talked to, nobody was aware of this project. Nobody was aware. And I know that you followed all, that all the legal, legalities were followed as far as getting it out there, but people in this, in this part of the county, they don't get the newspaper. We don't even get decent internet over there. We can't check the internet and, and get everything on the internet. So people were not aware of this project. Just this past weekend, we were at the Fall Festival, Harvest Festival down at Meadowbrook and talked to a lot of people. People, again, were not aware of this project. They're aware of the Mountain Valley Pipeline, or some people think, "I thought that was stopped," or, you know, but they were not aware of this actual project that Roanoke Gas has to put this gate station in over there. So I think there has been inadequate notice, and I think it would be very premature to go ahead and approve this at this time, considering that a lot of the citizens in that side of the county are not aware or have not been aware of, of this project going through. I also like to address the, the cost to Roanoke Gas as far as the tap fee goes. We know as far as the construction fee goes that that may not go up, but again, I had a meeting with my supervisor where, as Mary Ann Capes said, there were specific, specific numbers mentioned, that it would be this cost at this time, and it would double within six months, and it would triple within a year. Where's the evidence of that? Where's, where's the actual estimates of what this would cost the, the tap fee into the Mountain Valley Pipeline, not the construction fee? And furthermore, why is it Montgomery County's problem to make sure that Roanoke Gas saves money? I mean, it shouldn't be our problem to take that on. If they can't make prudent financial decisions when tapping into this, that should be their problem, not Montgomery County's problem. We also know that the Giles County Administrator has said that they are not getting a tap, and they don't want a tap. So it's not like there's some competition for everybody to get a tap in here. If there's a tap going into Franklin County, why does there need to be another one in Montgomery County? I mean, Giles County obviously has the wisdom to see that they don't need this, and that it's, it's not prudent to support this project. Mr. Durazia talked about the integrity of EQT. Does everybody here know that EQT actually has, is guilty of environmental crimes in Pennsylvania? They have numerous lawsuits against them, including here in Virginia. They have some lawsuits against them in Southwest Virginia. lawsuits against them in southwest Virginia. So, I don't think they're a company of high integrity. And we've seen, um, the work that they've done with this pipeline, it has simply, to me, has not been very high when it comes to integrity. And we keep talking about colder temperatures, how there's more demand of gas. Has anybody noticed what the overnight temperatures have been recently? We're in October and last night at 11 o'clock, it was 74 degrees at my house. I live out in the valley in the mountains. It was 74 degrees in October, overnight, at my house. This is not normal. There are studies that show that our overnight temperatures continue to climb, that the overnight lows are getting higher and higher and higher. And I recall last winter, we had some cold days, but it was 80 in February. So, the argument that there's a demand for this because of the weather, because of cold temperatures, to me, doesn't fly. And another thing, one of the other companies that was mentioned as far as the demand for natural gas in Roanoke and Bodatot, of course, not Montgomery, was Hung Kombucha. And I did a little looking up about Hung Kombucha and apparently they are very supportive of renewable energy. They are considered a company that's, that's very interested in solar and wind power, not necessarily natural gas. Maybe it's all that they look for here because we haven't been pushing renewable energy. And maybe that's what we need to start pushing, is more renewable energy and stop hanging on to this dinosaur of fossil fuels because our future depends on it. And I also checked out a website called BTU Analytics. It also says the demand of natural gas is falling. And they are an industry website, so.
Thank you. Your, your time's up. And the next speaker after this one is Claire Law. Sir, would you please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Alahan Rukowitz. Gendarme for this area.
About just like Fidjikowski.
I'm at 7013 Campbell Drive and I'm in Mono County, just across from that, that border line there, as is shown on the map. We're in the Campbell Hills subdivision. Earlier, I believe the, the board has hopefully provided with a, a letter from our community. I also dropped off the original with the clerk, uh, with the, the original signatures. I'm just going to read the part of the letter as well as expound upon a couple of topics that were both brought up today, as well as in the planning commission that I was at on September 19th. So, we're being geared to address regarding the gate station that's proposed in the Elston-Lafayette area, which is directly adjacent to Campbell Hills. We are right across from, from where the gate station is supposed to go in. As Roanoke County residents, both myself and the community, recognize that we don't have a representative voice here, but we would respectfully ask that you consider our voice and reject the application as it will directly impact our community. There's increasing evidence of the detrimental effect that gate stations can have on residents' well water, air quality, and overall environment. Normal operations can release nearly a dozen carcinogenic chemicals, including benzene formaldehyde and toluene. These chemicals are known to cause medical conditions such as cardiac arrhythmia, respiratory irritation, bronchitis, birth defects, and cancer. There is documentation of direct and sometimes severe health impacts to residents and pets. And to touch upon, was, uh, mentioned earlier, again, I don't follow the newspaper or anything like that, and again, I'm part of Montgomery County, but I had no idea of either the proposed project right across from where we are until some Montgomery County residents came through and able to make us aware. So, I'm grateful to them for alerting our community to this project. As a person with the background in environmental health over 10 years in that field, I was immediately concerned about the impacts that this would have to our home and our community right across the border. The introduction of this gate station, it doesn't benefit citizens of Montgomery County and at least for us right there across from Roanoke County. When I spoke with Roanoke Gas, they explained there was no intention to run the line up into Campbell Hills to serve our community. So, we're not seeing benefit from this gate station as well. While Roanoke Gas stated that it serves approximately 90 customers, at the planning commission that I was at the previous couple of weeks ago, when they were pressed about those 90 customers, it was my understanding, and I don't remember the individual from Roanoke Gas who spoke, his name, but he said that those 90 customers, that was counting the hookups, that they'd actually all use gas. So, I'm, I'm just curious, of those 90, how many of them are actually using customers? Because the individual said those were 90 hookups. So, I'd just be curious to ask this, the board to investigate how many of those are using customers. In addition, although Roanoke Gas has indicated the gate station to be used to prevent disruption of gas supply to large businesses in Roanoke County on days when temperatures drop below, and this is what I heard from the individual at the meeting, he said negative 10 degrees Fahrenheit. That was the, the number he had thrown out. Southwest Virginia doesn't really experience many negative 10-degree days or even zero-degree days. If you think back over the last four or five years, we may have an occasional cold snap where we drop below sub-zero, but it's not that often. And I can't see that that temperature would cause a disruption for them, since we don't have much of that. Finally, as, as I think was alluded to and stated at the meeting that I was at, Roanoke Gas is not, and planning to serve any additional customers in Montgomery County. So, the gate station doesn't really address any proposed growth or anything that's going on through there. One of the concerns also that the community has is just the impact in terms of this gate station and potentially looking to the future, is, is there any tying with a compressor station, which could be much worse to the environment, to the water, to the, the air than the gate station alone would be. The industrialization of our rural landscape, it would permanently mar and devalue our community, our neighborhood. Those are quality of life issues that are difficult to quantify, but nonetheless embody the reason that many of us chose to live in that area. We hopefully will consider rejecting Roanoke Gas special use permit, approving it with lenient tacit approval to the MVP project, and unnecessarily endanger residents while providing no material benefit to the citizens of Montgomery County. On behalf of the residents of Campbell Hills, I ask you to please deny Roanoke Gas application. Thank you.
The next speaker after Ms. Law is Alan Moore.
My name is Claire Law. I live at 1602 Hoyt Street in Blacksburg. And as you can probably tell, I'm not from around here. The reason I'm here is twofold. I come from an area in Britain that has many similarities to this area. Quiet, country, very lovely, nice to live in. And I am concerned that the Mountain Valley Pipeline bringing in its indu-, bringing in the gas as facilitated by these, by Roanoke Gas Company. I think that that is sending kind of the wrong message to the area. It can and probably will change the nature of the area. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the longevity of this, um, of this pipeline, the Mountain Valley Pipeline, and therefore the actual gas coming into this area. It's my understanding from the presentation this evening that the existing pipelines, which come from considerable distances, have been operating since the 1940s and 1950s. That's a very long time. Some of the gas in those areas is already starting to tail off, though I do understand that new technology may improve that and keep the gas flowing. There's also my understanding that the gas being currently fracked in Pennsylvania doesn't have a very long lifespan attached to it. Again, there may be new technologies that help that improve and keep that going. I've seen figures that range from 11 years available to 20 years to 100 years if the technology improves. So, I think one of the things to be considered is if the lifespan of the gas coming in through this pipeline is that short, what's going to happen to your facility, to the facility that they plan building? You're just going to be left with this stuff sitting there doing nothing. So, a minor issue perhaps, but something that I think needs to be taken into consideration as you think about the whole application. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Moore is next. And then the next speaker is Elizabeth Struthers. And it looks like Melbourne, but I'm not sure the handwriting is fair enough.
I'm Alan Moore of 1757 Ginger Lane. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I want to thank Supervisor Demottz for clarifying that we're talking about fracked gas and not natural gas. It's an important distinction. I want to thank Supervisor Bone for bringing up the very critical issue of renewables. That's something that's part of our identity in Montgomery County and something that we're starting to show some leadership and growth in. I want to thank the staff for their preparation and their detailed work. I was hoping that Emily would be able to clarify her characterization of the parcel, which is in fact adjacent to the Roanoke River and visible from the Roanoke River and to residents across the river, which I would consider adjacent to the parcel. I also want to address the point of reliability and competitiveness raised by Roanoke Gas. And referring to the previous speaker, the US Geological Survey has estimated that the Utica Shale Formation will be fracked out in 10 to 15 years. And that's the source of the Mountain Valley Pipeline. So, we're talking about a very short-sighted attempt here. I also was questioning whether Roanoke Gas is required to put in an odorant, whereas Mountain Valley Pipeline is not, as we well know. I don't like planning to speak for three minutes, so my other two minutes, I was going to read some haiku. Actually, I wanted to show you this camera that I bought about six months ago. I bought it specifically for the purpose of documenting the destruction and deception and desperation of the Mountain Valley Pipeline exclusively in Montgomery County. I've shot almost 5,000 images of destruction of our mountains, our wildlife, our water, our air. From, I don't know how many of you have actually been out into Eastern Montgomery and seen destruction. It goes from Sinking Creek, Mountain, Craig Creek, Rush Mountain, Mill Creek, Mount Taylor Road, Johnson Ridge, Catawba Road, Paris Mountain, Half Acre Rocks, Flatwoods, Bradshaw, Fort Lewis Mountain, Lafette, crosses the Roanoke River, 460, the Railroad, Cove Hollow, Yellowfinch, affects many communities in Eastern Montgomery. And I'm not sure how much of destruction you've actually seen. I wish I'd had the forethought to bring you an image that just kind of brings all this together. And I failed to do that tonight, but I see now there's a very important image that maybe we should reflect on. And it's right behind you on this wall. It's our county seal, which is our identity. When we look at the bigger picture, that's in fact what's being assaulted here, is our identity. Again, our wildlife, our fishing, our air, our faith, our, our science community. I know at least three of you seem willing, seem to think that this identity is worth fighting for, and I appreciate that very much. As for the rest, I hope that what you've heard tonight will help you in your decision-making. For me, it's been alarming to hear one comment that the pipeline's coming anyway, we might as well get something out of it. This, to me, sounds like hopelessness. And to me, hopelessness is the biggest power of the ruling elite. And if we give in to hopelessness, we really have nothing left. So, we need leaders, leaders that instill hope in us. And I hope that you do, guys, you all do still have some hope in preserving our identity and preserving the beauty of this county. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. The next speaker after this is Ken Gray. After, after.
Elizabeth Struthers, Malvin, 1391 Breckerman Drive, Blacksburg. As you consider your decisions about the requested special use permit, I hope you will ask yourselves the following questions. Question one, have the citizens whose land values, health, safety, and way of life would be most threatened by such a regulator station been given a fair understanding of what is at stake and ample opportunity to make their opinions known? Or are there other interests being served instead? Eastern Montgomery has already had to accept rail lines and the approval of an intermodal rail yard. Is Eastmont considered an appropriate sacrifice zone because it has a higher percentage of persons living at or below the poverty line? And who would this sacrifice benefit? The rest of Montgomery County? Not really. Roanoke Gas? Not really. As Diana Christopoulos has shown, demand for Roanoke Gas is declining based on their own SEC filings. So, who is left to benefit? MVP? The members of the Board of Supervisors? One has to wonder. Is this an environmental justice issue akin to the issue of the Atlantic Coast Pipeline planning to build a supersized compressor station in Union Hill, a neighborhood with a majority population of descendants of formerly enslaved peoples? You have to think through these questions with some care. Question two, do you know just how Roanoke Gas came to request a tap into MVP? There are plenty of indications to suggest that the request did not come from Roanoke Gas to MVP, but the other way around. Originally, MVP was not able to cite any businesses in Virginia that had requested to tap into their pipeline, a very expensive proposition for the requester. As our Board of Supervisors, you pushed MVP representatives hard on that very point. Then MVP announced in quite careful wording that Roanoke Gas would acquire a 1% interest in the MVP project. Did MVP talk Roanoke Gas into this arrangement and possibly assist them to acquire that 1% interest in order to quell that critique? But the specific question for you, pledged to act on behalf of Montgomery County, is how local to Montgomery County is Roanoke Gas, which currently serves perhaps 540 customers in our county and whose application for the special use permit mentions only that the new gate station will enhance our ability to serve new customers in Eastern Montgomery, particularly in the area that is designated for future industrial use. There's nothing definite there. And as the Roanoke Gas representative admitted to the planning commission, they have been ready to add more customers in Eastern Montgomery, but they've not had requests. And what kind of industries would choose to use an expensive, polluting, climate-changing fossil fuel instead of cleaner, cheaper renewable energy? And would such industries be good neighbors for the citizens of Lafette and Elston? Question three, are you aware that MVP originally proposed a compressor station for Montgomery County and listed it in its draft environmental impact statement as the Swan compressor station in Catawba Bay? That after local citizen protests, this compressor station disappeared in its final environmental impact statement? Or did it disappear? Is the Lafette regulator station a placeholder for the Montgomery County compressor station to reappear as conveniently as it disappeared? Even if the location proposed for this gate station were not to be used for, by MVP for a compressor station in the future, is there another site in Elston where the main valves are designed to be only five miles apart, rather than the usual 20 miles apart, that would make a quite convenient site for a compressor station later? Is getting the Board of Supervisors to grant a special use permit to a Lafette regulator station simply greasing the procedural skids for asking for something more later on? The Board of Supervisors needs to be asking such questions now. Question four, can you really expect the citizens of Montgomery County to believe in this present case, your frequent plea of, "Our hands are tied. MVP is a federal project already approved by FERC. We can do nothing about it"? We were once that naive. Our activities and research of the past four years have worn off that naivete. What is at stake here is something entirely within your control, the granting of a special use permit by Montgomery County. No other government or corporate agency has that authority, only you. And what was the special use permit before? The building of an industrial installation, installation on land in our rural neighborhood, zoned for agricultural use by an out-of-county business under extreme pressure from an out-of-state business with a horrible reputation, both locally and nationally, for environmental destruction and currently with quite shaky financial standing and given recent withdrawals of key permits and violation of their FERC permit as they continue construction because the FERC permit requires all, all other such permits being placed before construction? Do you have a responsibility to help Roanoke Gas deal with the pressure of MVP? Do you have a responsibility to MVP? I doubt that was in your oath of office. You are pledged to protect the interest of all citizens of Montgomery County. We have elected you to do that. Question seriously, decide carefully.
Thank you. After Ken Gray, it's, it looks like Crystal Mellow. Sir, please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
My name is Reverend Ken Gray. I'm pastor of Big Spring Baptist Church and I live at 6065 North Fork Road there in Elston. The parsonage of the church is about two miles from this proposed site. And the church is very close to the site on Break Road that you saw a picture of, which is an ugly scar on that road. When I brought my family to Eastern Montgomery County 20 years ago to become pastor of Big Spring Baptist Church, my city wife was a bit, a bit trepidatious about to move out into the country. Indeed, living out in the rural area, there is some cost to that. You are farther away from things. She was extremely concerned that we would be further away from them all. But she grew to love that place, as, as I loved it from the very beginning, because of its rural nature, because of its beauty. rural nature, because of its beauty. A few years ago, when the intermodal facility was proposed, which is actually in between my house and the proposed site for this gate station, we were distressed to see that that was going to come upon us, even though we didn't want to see there. Many of our neighbors didn't want to see it there. For two years, I dealt with the fact that I had trouble getting to my house because the road in front of my house was being widened and straightened in preparation for the trucks that would come from the interstate down my road to the intermodal site. I couldn't get mail sometimes, and packages had trouble getting delivered. During that time that the road was passed, there is a wetland on North Fork Road about a mile the other way up my house, and that every March, there is this wondrous, wondrous natural occurrence of peepers that come out into this wetland. After the road was widened, the wetland was infringed upon, and now there are less of those. In that very same place, because of the Mountain Valley Pipeline, there is a preparatory facility, a staging area, that has been built where there was a green meadow before, and that's infringed even further upon that wetland. I don't know how many of the peepers will be left this spring when we come upon that time again. I know that because of that staging area, there are arc lights that burn all night long. And just over the hill from my house, at nighttime, it looks like the mountain's on fire. I know that during the day, I can sit in my front yard and see the scar going across the mountain where the pipeline is going to be. And I hear that the main benefit of this gate station for Montgomery County will be so that we can supply gas to more industrial customers in Montgomery County. If that's the case, then I ask you to vote no. We do not need any more industry in Eastern Montgomery County. We do not need any more scars upon the landscape. When I first moved to Elleston 20 years ago, I could go out in my front yard and look at the stars across the sky, and it was beautiful. Now, because of the increased industrialization, especially because of those arc lights, I can't hardly see any stars in my front yard anymore. The benefits of living in this part of the world, this beautiful part of the world, are being stripped away, being stripped away. And this is just another step in that direction. At the sixth day, when God looked back and saw all that He made, He saw it was very good. I ask you, can you seriously answer the question yes, that this would be very good? I say it's not. Please vote no.
Thank you. Crystal Mellow, and then it looks, there's some scribble marks, but the last name is Robbins, but it may be Mara Robbins is the first. Oh, if you would have a seat, you're the next speaker.
My name is Crystal Mellow. I live at 992 Poplar Hollow Road in Shawsville. I want to thank, I don't want to mess up your name, first name Sarah, for asking a lot of questions, because I'm probably considered one of the living below poverty level in Eastern Montgomery County. Steve, I'm a bit upset with you that you only asked one question. We sat down with you the other day, and I was hoping you would dig a little bit deeper and find out what the folks in your area need to know that you admitted don't know about this. I also went down LaFett yesterday and spoke with the people in probably the first five or six houses. None of them were aware of this. I don't know if you've gone out and knocked on your folks' doors and asked them how they feel about it. Being poor is exhausting, and especially when I depend on y'all, the people, our supervisors, for our best interest. I don't feel like that's happening. My son's downstairs right now studying for a science test that I should be helping him study for. The last three weeks has been just constant talking to people. It's exhausting. My truck broke down. I wanted to go talk to more folks today. Couldn't push it any further until I can get it looked at. I think, you know, tapping jobs for Eastern Montgomery County, if it's with the pipeline or if it's for whatever, is so false, and it's feeding off people. I have a 27, almost 27-year-old daughter that doesn't live in this area. She moved away because there's not good-paying jobs. I would actually like better jobs in the area. In the last few years, I've watched us lose two banks, a pharmacy, another gas station just shut down completely Friday. What else has shut down? Opening businesses in Eastern Montgomery County is not an easy task, whether you want to say that Allie's bought $100,000 worth of equipment before getting a permit, which I kind of found that I don't think he would have done that. I haven't had a chance to talk to him to dispute your claim Friday, but I will. As far as the Roanoke Times publication, I live on a mountain with seven folks. One person gets a newspaper on that mountain. That's not a viable source of information. We do have a link letter that comes out, which the date for the board meeting was posted as yesterday. So even if folks did want to come, if the meeting wasn't yesterday, it's today. So even that information was false. I clean houses in the area. I have 13 houses that I do. I'm self-employed. I also clean a business in Eastmont. One house has a gas hookup. There's potential customers, there's houses all around this pipeline route that have had for-sale signs up now for years. And I was just thinking, well, maybe it's bad water, because one of the houses in that area that I clean had a bad water issue. Why is everybody selling out of this place? Well, it's because of the pipeline. So nobody's running down here to buy houses. The houses in Cove, they have for-sale signs sitting there forever. Places aren't, people aren't running here to move next to a 42-inch pipe that has never been placed in the ground. We don't know what really is going to happen once it gets going. I have been on numerous sites with Allen, and in the last three months, I've been honestly saying this as long as I've been involved in this, and it's crazy what I'm seeing as just an ordinary person who has no science degree, none of this. And the things that I don't know that are common sense, I'm not understanding why a lot of people with degrees don't get. And that, that's pretty much, I think, is all I can say. But just as far as it bringing jobs and whatnot, and I would like, if anybody here from District C could raise your hand if you would like for them to just table this, that are actually from our District C area. I appreciate that, and thank you for everything that I know that we've all met, a lot of us have met within the last couple of months. It's been a beautiful thing, and I appreciate their knowledge and being patient with me and teaching me these things. And like I said, I never thought I'd be standing up here doing this, and I find it sad, because I'm just one of those people who really thought that our supervisors or whoever would have our best interests, and I'm finding out that it's not. It's these folks that care. Thank you.
The next speaker after Ms. Robbins is Tom Adams, it appears.
Hi. My name is Mara Robbins, and I live in Copper Hill, Virginia, Floyd County. First time I was in this room was over four years ago. So we've been fighting the Mountain Valley Pipeline alongside you guys, despite the fact that our county is no longer in the line, but we knew from the beginning that it was wrong, and we've stuck to it. And this is wrong. You guys know it. You can do something about it, and I strongly encourage you to do whatever you can do, initially delay, whatever it is you can do to stop this, because if you think that it's not about fracking, then you're wrong. And frankly, the disrespect that you just showed, Sarah, you know, we have a hashtag for one of the security guys that has helped monitor some of the construction and treecutting of Mountain Valley type pipeline. It's a, "Come on, Steve, that was a grave mistake." We call it mansplaining, and it was wrong. She deserved to ask every single question that she asked, and I personally would be ashamed if you were my representative. So one of the things that I have learned over the course of four years of fighting this is that it's good to have a focus. Thank goodness there are a lot of smart people in this room that know a lot that I don't know. What I do know a lot about is water. And I can tell you that there are several bodies of water that would be affected by this gate station. I can also tell you that frankly, I don't quite understand how they can make a gate station without some sort of processing facility. This is raw fracked gas. They're going to tap it directly into the gate station? Doesn't work that way. But again, there are people here who can speak to that better than myself, so I'm going to take some of my time to show you how many water bodies would be crossed. And these are only the ones that are actually documented, and some of the ones on here crossed 16 or 17 times, so it's actually much bigger than this. Anybody like to help me hold this? So that's one of our major concerns, is the irreparable damage that this would do to our water. And this gate station is part of it. So you can see over here where the red bandanas are. Michael, if you can hold that up. So that's where the water bodies that would be directly impacted by the gate station would be. And this runs all the way from West Virginia to Pennsylvania County. Over 1,000 water bodies would be crossed and potentially destroyed. I know there are many that have already been destroyed by construction, including a wetland up in Bent Mountain that was never even documented. So it's all intersected. It's like the climate crisis. It's hard to encompass the whole thing. People want to focus on single-use straws. So that's kind of how I see this. This is a single-use straw. It's pretty easy for you guys to do something. It's a whole lot easier than living in a tree or chaining yourself to a bulldozer, which is pretty much what we're reduced to after four years of doing everything we can do to do it right. So it's right. You guys know what's right, and I really, really hope that you do the right thing. Until my time is up, I'm going to introduce you to some of the water bodies that would potentially be destroyed by the Mountain Valley Pipeline.
Ma'am, you need to remain at the podium if you're going to the rest of the board. Yes, ma'am.
I'll pick this over here then, because I want to make sure that the ones that are directly impacted, the South Fork of the Roanoke, we have Indian Run here in Montgomery. We have the North Fork of the Roanoke River as well. Bradshaw Creek. I was over there just the other day with my friend Tina. Possibly steep the slopes they're trying to build this on. We have Dry Run, ironic name, right? Because it's wet. We have Mill Creek. You know there's a Mill Creek in just about every town? There's a Mill Creek up in Roanoke County and also in Pennsylvania. So we have Craig Creek here. We have...
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thomas Adams, 1724 Sage Lane, Blacksburg. First of all, I want to say that I'm humbled by the people who've spoken before me. I also want to say that I think Roanoke Gas is a good company, and they do excellent engineering work. But that's not the issue. That's not the issue at all. I have this speech that I've written called "The End of the World Speech," and that would be funny if it weren't so serious. Global warming is real. The scientific evidence demonstrating anthropogenic causes is unassailable. Our use of fossil fuels is increasing the concentration of greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, which is causing air temperatures to increase. Sea level rise is already impacting cities around the world which are being inundated with severe weather flooding that is, excuse me, most impactful at high tides. Glacial melt and thermodynamic expansion of oceans from ocean warming is causing sea level rise. Coral reefs are being lost from bleaching caused by warming ocean temperatures. Permafrost is melting, releasing great amounts of methane, which is 80 times more effective as greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. Invasive species are migrating to northern latitudes. Forests are being lost in northern latitudes from beetle infestations that no longer die during winter, winter because of warmer temperatures. Freezing temperatures are beginning later in the year, and we all know this, and ending earlier in the year. Summer months are more humid, and major category storms or hurricanes are occurring than average, than the historical average. The occurrence of more intense rainfall is increasing, which is leading to increased flooding in many regions. We are losing arable lands, which will lead to famine and increased social instability and wars, and we're seeing that in the Middle East. These are the consequences of global warming, and it's an example of these hurricanes in tropical systems we're seeing right now. There's a storm moving to the desert, in the direction of the desert southwest. It's unprecedented that a tropical system should be moving in that direction. We have the Storm Michael that's going to hit Pensacola tomorrow or the next day. At the same time, last week, there was essentially a hurricane in the Mediterranean. When does that happen? And then we have a hurricane that's going to impact the Iberian Peninsula, Spain. The UN and IPCC just released a report called the IPCC Special Report on 1.5-degree C of Warming. It's gotten a lot of public attention for very good reason. The report states that unless we begin to reduce our use of fossil fuels within the next 10 to 12 years, reduce, not expand for financial gain, but reduce, we will pass through the 1.5-degree C increase in mean global temperatures that we've seen since the beginning of the Industrial Revolution. This is important because it could point to a point of no return, where the Earth's climate turns into a runway rise in global temperatures that could doom life on Earth. And that's why this is the "End of the World Speech," because it's real and because it's happening now, not in the future, now. The IPCC estimates that we must reduce global greenhouse gas emissions by 45% within 12 years to reach the target. The problem is that we have nonlinear positive reinforcing. As ocean ice melts, it leaves more, it leaves dark ocean waters that absorb radiation more, way more than this sunlight that's reflected from the ice.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is...
The justification for this is simply for financial gain.
Is it Georgia? Is it Haverdy?
Yes, Georgia Haverdy.
Georgia Haverdy? And then the next speaker after that?
Carolyn Givens.
Is Carolyn Givens.
Good evening. My name is Georgia Haverdy, and I'm the owner and operator of Doe Creek Farm at 412 Doe Creek Farm Road in Pembroke, Virginia. So I'm a Giles County resident. I'm your neighbor. I'm here to refute a rumor that Giles County is eminently going to put two taps in our county, and Montgomery County better hurry up and get their tap in now and approve this before Giles County does. Well, I heard that rumor, and so did a lot of other citizens, so we contacted Chris McLaren. I know Chris. So I called him, cause Mountain Valley Pipeline's going through my farm, so I talk to him often. So I contacted Chris, and I said, "I heard this rumor." And he said, "No." He said, "We looked at this several months ago, and we decided, no, we were not gonna do this because nobody in our county wants it, and we have to have a customer, and there is no county, no customer in Giles County who wants this tap, or any tap. So no, we're not doing it." And he said, "Where did this come from?" "I have no idea." So I'm assuming it came from this county to try and push this tap through now. So take your time. You've got all the time in the world. You don't need to do this right now. You can wait. You can study it. You can listen to the people behind me, and you can think a little bit more about what you wanna do. You don't have to approve this now. That's all I've got. Thanks.
And then, after this speaker, Irene Leach.
My name is Carolyn Givens, and I live at twenty-three-eleven North Main Street in Blacksburg. But I'm also a property owner of a working farm in historic Newport, Virginia, on Sinking Creek Mountain. I have not signed a contract with MVP, which is going right through the middle of this farm. My husband died last year, and I walk this farm, and we worked hard to pay it off. We were already farming it, so it seemed like it would be a good investment. Never did we dream that the property could be snatched from us by a company claiming eminent domain, especially when that has seemed like a false claim. I completely oppose the gate station, which only gives credence to MVP's claim of public need and necessity. What percent of gas transferred through this forty-two-inch pipeline with fourteen-hundred PSI will be tapped by Roanoke Gas? What percent of all of that will be tapped? And does that make their claim of eminent domain true, so that they can take property from all of us? And there are a lot of us that are still fighting this. Are the potential effects of this dangerous pipeline, dangerous? The largest forty-two-inch pipe line with the greatest PSI that has ever been constructed, and constructed by a company that does not have a good reputation? It's running up steep slopes of our mountains and down, and through the karst terrain of our farms in Giles, Craig, and Montgomery Counties. I don't know if it's karst in Franklin County, but it is in these counties. It's putting many of those who are property owners in the blast, and you can read that incineration or vaporization if it happens to be animals or people. Not just burning, but vaporized. It's putting many of us in the blast zone and/or in the evacuation zone. Are these potential effects worth the one percent tap that allows the MVP to claim eminent domain? Other people have spoken eloquently about the whole climate change issue. I really hope that that's, that you look at sustainable energy, take leadership and do that. I'm personally going to put solar on my roof. I've already talked with the company, just to make a statement that, in fact, not just to make a statement, we need to do it. We all need to make statements about what has to happen, not just in this country, but in the world. So I hope you vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leach, and then the next speaker is Michael James, and his handwriting, is that Duramo? Duramo?
D-R-A-M-O.
Duramo?
D-R-A-M-O.
Duramo?
D-R-A-M-O. It's right there.
Thank you.
Irene Leach. I live at forty-two-twenty North Fork Road in Alliston. So I'm a District C person, and I did a handout to be sure that I got the points to you. As I sat here tonight, I'm gonna end up mostly talking about things that aren't written here. I'm in the unique situation of being a mile from the Mountain Valley Pipeline, and then my family's farm that we've operated for a hundred and sixteen years is in Buckingham County, about four miles after the compressor station. And I've been dealing with things there. And the story that I'm hearing about the tap here is so different from what I hear in Buckingham, and it doesn't make sense to me. They've said it's five million dollars for a tap, and it doesn't matter when you put it in, it costs five million dollars. There is a business that has been in Buckingham for a long time, Conite Mining, that has been wanting gas. There actually is, they're gonna put that compressor station where the existing transco line comes on. And so, it's not that far away. There's been gas in the county, but nobody locally has used it after fifty years. We wonder if we ever will. But Conite wanted it, so they worked out a deal so that the county has agreed that they'll pay two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars if a tap gets put in, from tax dollars. And the company is actually offering two-hundred acres, so that some other companies could come in and build there, because the amount of gas that Conite needs isn't high enough on a regular basis for them to be willing to put a tap in. They have to, you know, not only have a certain amount, but on a regular basis, a certain amount. And Longwood and Hampton-Sidney together don't make up enough to do a tap. There are no taps going on the Atlantic Coast Pipeline. The whole thing is concerning, and the fact that the stories are so different, it really bothers me. I have to say that it's, in my experiences of dealing with the two counties, I've been proud to be in Montgomery County, and I have felt far better represented as a citizen here than I had in my home county. I hope that you'll do the right thing. We cannot depend on our federal government to look out for our health, our environment, or any of those things because of the way things are being handled at the federal level right now. And that makes the local level super important. It makes it so you've gotta stand up in ways that you haven't had to stand up for historically. Our government doesn't even include methane as one of the gases that you have to be concerned about, and yet now we know that it's about eighty times worse as a greenhouse gas than is carbon that we have been tracking. This is a real concern, and the gas that escapes throughout the system is something that is of concern. There's just too little information available right now about this in order to approve the SUP. We need details about the equipment. I can tell you that in Buckingham, they've changed so often, we haven't been able to keep up with what equipment's gonna be there, because they keep saying they're updating it, but then that makes it hard for us to know what's going on. And I realized, we didn't have much in the way of details here either. It's important that we, that the county asks for baseline air, water, and land readings, so that if you've got problems later, you've got something to compare it to that can go to court. We also need health status data of the people living right around where this infrastructure is going, because again, we may have to go and get some help down the road. Once we approve it, you can't add conditions, even if you find out that there are things that are needed between now and when it's built. So we're in a big hurry to do something that maybe we'd be best waiting and getting more information. The people around it are opposed to it. It doesn't sound like we're gonna be using it any year, and certainly the needs that Roanoke Gas had can be met in other ways.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker, I'll ask the county administrator to help me with that last name.
Eric. Figure, marker. Figure, uh, uh.
All right, I'll ask Vice Chair to help me with it. Erica?
Erica. Fair enough. Thank you.
Sir, go ahead and state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Michael James D'Amo. I live at one-zero-three Mountain View Drive, Blacksburg. A lot of things I can talk about, but I'm gonna talk about climate change, because every piece of gas infrastructure relates to climate change, and thus, every person's future in this room. Another report has come out that says we have twelve years, but till our climate is too far gone, that means if we need to avoid this, if we want to avoid this, we need to keep eighty percent of the fossil fuel in the ground. That means we need to peak our natural gas by 2020, which means no more infrastructure today. That means no new pipelines, no new gas taps, none of them. Now, so, you know, maybe it'll bring jobs, money, energy needs, I mean, it won't, but if it did, I still, I still, I'd still be against it, because I'm in the generation that no longer has a future because of climate change. Okay? Now, we could get, we could cut off forty percent of our energy use through energy efficiency in our state, but Roanoke Gas isn't about that. I saw what happened from aftermath of Hurricane Florence. I saw the people that rose up instead of the government to protect the people. I saw the hurricane last year, and I got the call from my partner at the time when she returned to her island of Puerto Rico and said, "My island is destroyed. There are no trees left in my neighborhood. No one knows where to go." More people died from that hurricane than died in nine-eleven, but I guess we've forgotten. Several years before that, I did disaster relief work after Hurricane Sandy. I met a man who had hope, even though he had just lost his wife, and he said, "You know, I think this is the thing that is gonna make them change, and it's gonna make them stop investing so much in fossil fuels." But they still wanna build new pipelines, new infrastructure. They still wanna bring more and more and more, even as, you know, the hurricanes get bigger, the droughts get larger, the fires get more immense, the food continues to shrink, causing mass migration and unrest. And this is from a one-degree temperature increase. We could triple that amount if we don't wean off of natural gas now. We could quadruple that amount if we continue to go business as usual entirely. So, Mrs. Spiggs was my teacher when I was eight years old. You look wonderful tonight, by the way. She was my teacher when I was eight, and I still had a lot more hope. I remember doing a project, which I wrote about animals. I didn't know then that we were in the fifth mass extinction, that twenty-eight percent of all land animals would be dead within, or were dead within the last forty-seven years, and thirty to fifty percent of all animals, all species, will be extinct within the next fifty years. Not might-will. That four billion people will run out of fresh water within the next ten years. And twelve-hundred is the number of natural gas corrupting well water. I think they probably knew that, but they didn't wanna say that. So this will affect everyone. This will affect everyone everywhere, and yet, we still have to go to these meetings. And you wonder why people lock themselves to an excavator, or climb a tree, or disrupt an orderly meeting? Because at campus, at lobby, I've talked to FERC, to EQ, to our control board, North Plumb, over letters, I've voted. And now I'm at this meeting, knowing that there's four of you, that probably doesn't matter what I say, you'll still, you'll still move this forward. Now, and maybe you can't stop climate change, maybe you can't even, this board can't even stop this pipeline, but this is a decision that you control, that has a little bit of an impact on this larger issue, and you need to own that. Now, I want to say that this board, I want this board to say regardless of monetary promises, that our future matters. You know, I don't wanna be angry anymore. I don't wanna have to disrupt meetings to be heard. But the fact is, our land and our future are being devastated, they're being wrong for us, yet if I go over five minutes, I'm the one who gets arrested and taken out in handcuffs. Now, why is that a process that I should respect? It is radical, and it is ridiculous to not be angry and to not disrupt this kind of situation. So prove me wrong, because I need something that helps me sleep at night, even if it's just something little in this giant situation. And you have the power to do that. Finally, I wanna say thank you, Sarah, for coming down and talking to the people during the break. Mr. Tuck, maybe if you didn't go and talk to Roanoke Gas during the break, and said "Talk to the people," you might be on the right side of this issue. Thank you.
The next speaker is Amy Nelson, and then the next speaker, it looks like there's two names, Brian and Emily Templeton. Please state your name and address.
I'm Eric Ifier-Bacher. I live at twelve-eight Echo Hills Road in Alliston. We recently bought a house there because we thought it was such a beautiful area. When we bought, we didn't know this was potentially going in, and in fact, it was my friend's Amy Nelson who's speaking next, but I think she had to go home and take care of dogs, that let me know about this. And I'm really disrupted and discouraged by this, and I'm really happy that some of you asked really probing and instructive questions to really get at what's going on. Other people have already spoken very eloquently about climate change. I'm certainly very for green options. I don't think this is our best use of space. I'd love to see solar panels go in there. I'd love to see wind go in there. We have a lot of natural resources in Virginia that aren't gonna corrupt our waterways and damage our soil and our beautiful landscape. So I think we have a unique environment here. I'm thrilled to be living here now, and I just hope that you'll listen to the constituents of this area that we don't want this. I'm one of those folks that do not want his gas. We have all-electric, and we're looking to put in solar panels. Unfortunately, they've gotten, gone up since some changes at the federal level have gone in, but we'd really love to put in more green, and we are not, we would not buy that gas. So please do listen to your constituents and vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Did someone say the next speaker had gone ma'am? That's what you said, correct? So Ms. Nelson will pass over, and Brian and Emily Templeton?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, hi. My name is Emily Templeton, and I'm here on behalf of myself, my husband Brian, who had to take our daughter out.
Sure.
So, I'm resident of Blacksburg, twenty-five-zero-four Capistrano Street, Blacksburg. We live in Blacksburg, but we feel like it's very important to support our neighbors in Eastmont. You know, towns have to respect their rural neighbors. One of the things that really bothered me about the presentation today was the sort of attitude that they had looked at places in Roanoke, but none of them were appropriate. They were too close to other places. And even though they said it's not gonna be any louder than a hairdryer, it's still not appropriate for anywhere, so they're trying to stuff it somewhere out of sight, out of mind. And I feel like it's just important for those of us in the town and in the rest of the county to support our rural neighbors, and say that this is something that they don't want, and therefore, the rest of us should really take that into account. Yeah, so if the site disturbances are really as small as they're saying, then we feel that this really should be in Roanoke. It should not be in Montgomery County. Another point that I'd like to make is one that's many, many people have made today, but, and that's that natural gas is not where we should be going. This is not our future. Natural gas is touted as being better than coal, and I'm not gonna debate specific numbers about how much better, how much worse, but the fact is that you can't just look at the use point of natural gas. Natural gas burns cleaner than coal does, but the whole production process is not really that much cleaner than coal. There's leakages everywhere, everywhere along the pipeline, there's leakages in the fracking process, they're only capturing a fraction of the gas that comes up out of the ground. They're only, and then there's also the other environmental damage that's done in the process. So, I know that this is just a substation. It's a very small piece of a larger infrastructure, and that's not, and the only decision before you guys today is whether or not to approve the building of, the rezoning that's necessary to allow this small substation. But it's also a step in the wrong direction. Montgomery County has the chance to be a leader that's moving towards renewable energies, that's moving towards, moving away from fossil fuels, moving away from the past and towards the future. And so I guess what I ask is that, rather than taking a small step back, let's make a small step forward. Let's incentivize solar energies. Let's encourage energy conservation. Let's use the... Let's use the tools we have to make sure that the infrastructure we have can support Montgomery County as we grow towards the future. We don't need this for our businesses. Our businesses can move towards green technology and then we can become a more appealing county. So let's step forward rather than stepping back. It's a small step, but I think every step counts. So thank you.
Thank you. Brett.
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 Banderon.
Banderon. Hey, Nelson. She's from Roanoke County. Ma'am, if you would please go to the podium and state your name and address and you'll have five minutes, okay?
Before I introduce myself, chairman, if I could just introduce the document I've got with me.
Well, ma'am, your time is starting now and you need to address the board, okay?
Roberta Banderon. I'm from Bent Mountain, Virginia. I live at 11577 Bottom Creek Road. We have before you a map that indicates, and I'll leave it here for you, that indicates for you exactly where Spring Hollow Reservoir is. We are actually on Bent Mountain, neighbors to you, and have concerns about the neighbors over the mountain from us and would ask you to take into account their concerns as voiced here tonight. There's a great deal that's been disturbing this evening, but I think first I'd like to point out and remind you that we've afforded you a copy of Appalachian Mountain Advocates' request to stop work within FERC today. That's one significant reason for you all to pause. I also ask you to take pause this evening with the incredible questions before you and ask yourselves to consider whether you have adequately done due diligence. There are questions, gaping questions, that have not been answered as to need. You're looking at macro need and micro need here. So former chiefs Norman Bay and Cheryl have highlighted in their respective dissents, as well as Commissioner Glick, on pipelines, including MVP, that in fact, no federal agency has undertaken a true programmatic needs assessment and consider infrastructure, gas supply, demand, and alternatives to the proposed project. FERC and aligned agencies refuse such a study for the Appalachian region, although they've used them in other regions for 15 to 20 years. With Roanoke Gas claiming this miniscule percent interest in MVP gas, evidence indicates it's destined for export. Now, that it was brought up, the odorant issue was brought up. My indications are that that would be in offloading Roanoke Gas. But again, across the board, in every county that's requested, and I believe including yours, odorant has been rejected, a clear indication of export. I'm asking you folks to consider good business, just good business, if that's all we talked about, besides economic and social and environmental justice for the people who are having this infrastructure dumped on them here in this community. I want to go back and remind you, I worked on a pipeline advisory committee for the last handful of years and those folks understood that Spring Hollow Reservoir was there. I believe that provides public drinking water to the region. There's a children's camp, Camp Roanoke, that's there. There are also tony and wealthy homes in that area. And I'm personally aware of people who paid attorneys to engage with the pipeline, to move the line. And so I can't say exactly what it was or who it was, but I will share with you that those are the circumstances of which I'm aware. And it's shameful to see people who are struggling at this point under the weight of this pipeline and under the potential poisons of the pipeline. Let's go through some of the questions. In 2014, I want to point out, 54% DOE indicated that 54% of infrastructure was not being used. Mr. Drazio can't point out to you exactly what percentage of the present infrastructure will be used or how he might, how his company might adjust. There are questions with regard to cash, the reliability of the company. We need to look into their criminal record. We can provide that information to you. Rates of explosions with, with Roanoke Gas. How is the gas going to be downloaded? What are safety questions? What are costs? I'm going to provide to you a clerk, Reason for Caution by Spencer Phillips, Ph.D., summary of key findings. How much time do I have here, yellow? Does that mean one minute?
About 18 seconds, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to consider as well, water toxins, and I will deliver that information to you in a paper at a later time. But again, just ask yourselves. The question here for you is your responsibility and your due diligence in the gaping holes that these folks have left.
The next speaker is Linda Majors.
Thank you. I'm Linda Majors, 2620 Mount Tabor Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. I'm here as the Chair of Preserve, Montgomery County, and I've been asked to make sure that two emails that you all received get into the record, which I will give to Vicki after I speak. The Appalachian Mountain Advocates' FERC request and the Thomas Hadwin email. Listening to the applicant tonight, it was clear the customer base to serve is in Roanoke County, not Montgomery County. And amazingly, not Campbell Hills. I've been to Campbell Hills, I canvassed there and talked to people there. Nobody there wants it. There's about 40 homes there that would certainly make a great place to offer them gas. Why aren't they going there? It's literally a stone's throw away from this gate station. It's also clear that if the customers in Montgomery County have already chosen not to sign up, why would they sign up for gas service after the tap goes in and it's going to be more expensive? And I am going to refer back to the Thomas Hadwin email for some points he made in that. He said Columbia Gas and East Tennessee Gas pipelines are expanding their capacities. It's likely that either pipeline could provide additional capacity greater than what is provided by the MVP to Roanoke Gas. This gentleman worked for Electric and Gas Utilities in Michigan and New York and led a department that was responsible for obtaining state and federal approvals for multi-billion-dollar utility projects and various other activities. He also says transporting gas using the MVP will add 30 to 40% premium to the current price of gas. The transportation charge for the MVP must be paid in full for 20 years, regardless of how much of the contracted capacity reservation is actually used. This is a bad deal for customers of Roanoke Gas. The cost of transporting gas using Columbia Gas or East Tennessee is a fraction of the cost of the MVP because existing pipelines have been mostly paid for by previous customers. New pipelines are very expensive and should be used only if there is no other choice. There are cheaper options for Roanoke Gas and customers it serves. In my mind, in listening to the applicant and listening to the people that have spoken at the planning hearing and also at this hearing, and knowing that in this document that was filed today with FERC from Appalachian Mountain Advocates, in which they say that the MVP has now lost three federal permits required, required to maintain compliance with the conditions of the FERC certificate to construct issued October 13th, 2017. The attached motion seeks revocation of the certificate based upon MVP non-compliance and places the entire MVP project in question. With these two documents, there's no reason for you to make a decision unless you're going to be voting no. Thank you.
That is all the speakers that signed up. However, at a public hearing, we give you the opportunity if there's other speakers who wish to speak. Because of this, I'm going to ask everyone who intends to speak to sit behind Ms. Harris and along beside Ms. Harris. If you don't get in line at this point in time and don't come forward, I will probably at some point in time cut off the public hearing because we're approaching 11 o'clock. So I'm asking you as nicely as possible, if you intend to speak and have not spoken, please come forward. Ms. Smith, Dr. Smith, you were the first one I saw come forward. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Tina Smoosh, 5555 Mount Tabor Road. I want to thank you all very much, first of all, for opposing the Mountain Valley Pipeline and for requesting odorant. We were the first county that requested that MVP make this safer. So you all have earned my respect for that. I was very disturbed reading the Roanoke Gas Gate Station permit application because there's many misleading and obfuscating statements in there. It, it downplays considerably the threats to our community, particularly the area where the gate station is. In the permit, they say this would be the 10th such facility operated by Roanoke Gas Natural Gas. This facility would be so different than the other gate stations based on the pressure and diameter of the Mountain Valley Pipeline that they're interfacing with. So there's major qualitative and quantitative differences between this gate station and all the others. We know the East Tennessee Natural Gas Line is only 8-inch diameter, has 815 PSI pressure. Columbia Gas Line that they interface with is just 24 inches. The MVP Line is 42-inch diameter. It's seven times bigger than the East Tennessee Line and it's got 1440 PSI of pressure. It's almost twice the pressure. Roanoke Gas does not have experience with these large differentials at any of their gate stations. And the wording of the permit made it sound like this is just another one along with the 10 that they already have. Inadvertent overpressurization in a gas main running under three towns north of Boston caused the devastating explosions that were experienced just in September, last month. It displaced 8,000 people, killed one person, and injured 25. This involved recorded pressures of just six PSI's in the lines that were intended to carry half a PSI. So this was an error in downregulating the pressure in a supply line going out into the distribution lines. Remote monitoring did not prevent this explosion. Item number 18 in the special use permit requirements claims there is no impact on air quality from this gate station. We know from our environmental scientist, who's no longer here, and from everything I know in studying gate stations, that there are a lot of air pollutants associated with gate stations. There's 24-hour noise. 24-hour noise from the gate stations is representing motors that are running, it's working on this gas, and there are, there's off-gassing from these stations. Methane leaks nationwide, predominantly at pipe connections. And a gas gate station is nothing but connection after connection. We know that they leak considerably. There is a lot of data on that. So they're constantly releasing some of the natural gas, but also the pollutants that ride along with natural gas. That's why compressor stations, you hear about what's emitted from them. It's bad carcinogens, volatile organic compounds. None of these contaminants are good, and these are also emitted from gate stations. The permit doesn't supply any data to back up their statement that there's no impact on air quality. I did call both East Tennessee Gas and Roanoke Gas offices regarding air quality testing at any of their gate stations, and I'm waiting for return phone calls from both of them. The application admits that noise is audible at the perimeter of the station. It just doesn't acknowledge that it's a 24-hour round-the-clock noise source. There are potentially safer and less expensive alternatives to this proposal, and one of which would be an interposition of a fitting at this site that would allow a gas station in the future if MVP is constructed. And the way it's looking, I think it may, it's doubtful now when and if the Mountain Valley Pipeline will even occur. So it's incredibly premature to go ahead and permit infrastructure of a pipeline that we just don't know that it will really exist. Roanoke Gas and this proposal has really offered an inadequate and misleading application which obfuscates important details. And I didn't expect that from Roanoke Gas. Thank you.
I'm not sure who was up there next. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, I'm Trish McLaughlin. I live at 275 Walton Road in Radford. A few things I'll probably repeat. Yes, Montgomery County, yes. I might repeat a few things, but I want to speak personally about some others so it just kind of all tie together. Staff indicated that the gas and its presentation, and I appreciate that, I served as clerk with the planning and zoning in Colorado, so I know how much work goes into that preparation and I appreciate it. They did indicate that the gas would not be extracted or refined at the site, and boy, is that, this is a good thing. However, the gas is fracked and as such causes extensive environmental and community devastation as well as the contamination of billions of gallons of water during its fracturing process at other source sites. Is it the position of Montgomery County that in setting our sites on future growth and job creation in this county, that our approval of environmentally catastrophic infrastructure is okay as long as it harms other families, especially children and the elderly? And as long as it happens in their communities and not our communities? Are we not called to think of those families and children adapting to life on essentially superbund sites where they suffer from increased rates of cancer and risks of water contamination in order to provide folks in our counties with supposed benefits of these dangerous energy options here in Montgomery County and Roanoke County? I believe that we are called to ask ourselves this. I believe that as a county, we should be a good neighbor. As a county in Virginia, we are part of a larger community, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and then an even wider community of Appalachia, and then a still larger community of this nation and the world. We should not be a party to or an abusive partner in this extractive assault. With all due respect to the board and to the applicant, I ask that each of you, we should all consider for a moment the children that are being poisoned in other states so that Meredith Novak and Roanoke Gas might appear before you with this application. Perhaps this would, this should become a moral compass inquiry. As a mother who has spent the last two years researching the impacts of unnatural gas to not only our communities, but especially those neighboring states where children have suffered and even died as a result of poisonous toxins released into the air and the toll that the extractive processes take on the communities, there is no reason that we cannot move to renewable sources of energy in the time of now. There is also no reason we cannot all try to live more simply, with less consumption. This is being considered bridge fuel for one reason, and that's because of profits and greed. There has become in this nation a complete disregard for the suffering of children and future generations. You have the power to consider this in your deliberation. What will it take to stop these companies from stealing my child's future, her ability to breathe, survive, or thrive? I live 20 yards away from the gate station, which has been expanded to serve the arsenal. I was unaware of the expansion before renting the property. So we're currently poisoned by the arsenal to the left and Spectra Energy to the right. It may seem unrelated to this board's purview, but I think it is very much related. My child is a citizen of this county. Her name is Daphne, and I am her voice tonight. We celebrated her eighth birthday this past weekend, and as all of her young friends were singing to her, all I could really wonder was whether they would be alive to celebrate birthdays 40 or 50 years from now. Will they be fighting each other to survive because they are being taught unnecessarily to consume, consume, consume? All children in Montgomery County and beyond deserve a future, and I especially would love it if you as a board and love it if you as a board and these guys here with Roanoke Gas and other companies who hope to serve them would stop being so self-absorbed and greedy. There are other jobs that need to be created. Start thinking of that instead, ones that work to save our creation and not destroy it. Staff also suggested that the Virginia DEQ would oversee monitoring. I would strongly urge that every board member take time to review the documented violations obtained by citizen monitor groups, such as the Mountain Valley Watch, which have occurred and are ongoing as recent as 4:00 this afternoon. DEQ is not monitoring. They are not staffed to do the work now. What reasonable assurances will we have that they will do so? These folks right here, despite all corruption to date, obviously and amazingly, have not completely lost hope. We are still here. We are not going away. I spoke briefly with Meredith Novak. She's a good person.
Your time is up.
A little bit naive and maybe manipulated by land agents, but seemingly a decent person who needed the money and had lost hope. But we had a loss.
Your time is up, okay? Sir?
My name is Cletus Bohan. I live at 6210 Yellow Finch Lane, Elliston, Virginia, District C. Thank you all for your very good questions. There were very many of them from several of you, very informative. Thank you. Although we're here kind of late tonight, but that kind of shows the importance of this little meeting here to consider the approval of this gate station. I too moved up here from Roanoke about 28 years ago because it was such a beautiful place, enjoyable place to live, nice rural community. There's talk in the comprehensive plan of industrializing that. Not really up on that. I was wondering if Montgomery County owned any land down in that area to do any industrializing, or where that was supposedly going to come from. There was mention one time about the place where the Inomote was going to be. I would doubt that any industry would want to build in an area where there was a pipeline going through. That would seem kind of dangerous. I do realize that this meeting is about the gate station, though. One thing I can't believe, though, is that Roanoke Gas relies on farmers and cows to measure their methane release. I just don't understand that. Maybe they could verify that when they come back up here. It's curious, though, that Roanoke Gas, they must have been pretty sure this was going to go through. They've already tore up Peaceful Drive in Roanoke County, if any of you know where that is. They tore that up and buried a pipe under the road there across 460. I don't know that they would do that in any reason other than being prepared for this gate station to go through. I hope y'all take your time and look at this. I believe you said you've got a year to make a decision on it. I hope you both know right away, but if you have your doubts, thoughts, if you'll take your time and think about it very carefully, let's look more into a long-term, less harmful, environmental-friendly means of energy. If it's got to come to industry, let's do it in a responsible way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ma'am, I believe you're the next speaker.
My name is Lauren Malhotra. I live at 103 Mountain View Drive in Blacksburg. So I'm not going to say anything new that the folks here haven't already said. They know about their community, their communities better than anyone. I just want to reiterate some of the outstanding questions that we still have. We don't know if the railroads will affect the stability of the tap. We don't know whether when there are leaks and you have to dig into the pipe to correct those leaks, do you need to release pressure with a blowdown that would release chemicals into the air? We don't know what the long-term health effects of Mercaptin's benzene, toluene, and other chemical ingredients in this dangerous cocktail will have on the people that live there. We don't know exactly how many wells will be contaminated in the case of a leak. We don't know if the tap will have an automated emergency shutdown or an ESD. We don't know if the DEQ is capable of watching over this project while at the same time failing to be able to cover the root of the pipeline and the construction that's already happening. We don't know how we will pay for the additional emergency services and health costs that this pipeline will cause while it simultaneously pushes down property values and cuts into this county's tax base. We don't know if EQT is a reliable partner, except that we do. Their most recent leak was two weeks ago. The main thing that I want to say, though, aside from all these remaining questions, is that this county will remember. We've talked about all the righteous reasons for you to listen to your constituents and vote no. People have told you story after story about their lives, families, the reasons that they love being part of this community and are here to defend it. But if that wasn't enough for you, if your heart is still that cold, vote in your self-interest. Just know, I can tell you for sure that this vote will follow you for the rest of your political life. This county will remember how you disposed of them, and they will dispose of you. Thank you.
Sir, I believe you're the next one. Please state your name and address. Oh, is, real quick, before we get past, is there a motion to go past 11 o'clock?
I'm moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Scheber?
Aye.
Ms. Bein?
Aye.
Ms. Bees?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Kean?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Sir, I'm sorry to have interrupted you.
My name is Stephen Gillespie. I live at 201 Fairfax Road in Blacksburg, Virginia. I am the Chair of the Greens for the New River Valley. We have people in Giles, Pulaski, Radford, Floyd, and of course, Montgomery County. So I can't improve on any of the eloquent things that people have said, heartfelt things that they've said here tonight, and it's pretty late evening, but it's also a very important matter. So I'm just going to concentrate instead of big giant thing like the future of humanity and climate change and all that, I'm going to just boil it down to something very, very small, and that's, is this really in the economic interest of Montgomery County? I'm going to leave aside almost all of the other really big, important questions and just make it very, very small and tight. So I was looking through the comprehensive plan from Montgomery County, while the citizens came together some time ago and really put an effort into describing what they wanted, what their vision was for the prosperity of the county. And they rated what they wanted as far as economic development. The very top of that was agriculture, and that's where the current zoning is for this piece. At the very bottom was industrial, by far. So, and what industrial use they wanted, they wanted to see that in designated industrial parks. They wanted to see economic development that was environmentally friendly, and they wanted it to provide high-quality, high-paying jobs. This project doesn't do any of that. The environmental impacts, they wanted to do clear, separated land use. Mixed use is part of the plan, but only for particular neighborhoods. They wanted to see industry based on tourism and agriculture history. They wanted a holistic approach. They did not want to see an individual decision made about a particular development in isolation. They wanted quality development, which is defined in the statement as low environmental impact. They want to increase future economic opportunities. And we've heard testimony, I guess you'd call it testimony, about how natural gas or fracked gas would take us back and not forward because businesses want clean, renewable, solar, and wind power energy. It says that we need to talk about economic development as it pertains to our quality of life. They want a sustainable approach, so where people live, where they work, where they go to school, all of that has to be accounted for. It's not just, can you see it from 460? And as far as the business development goes, I thought it was interesting because it divided it up between internal and external. And I believe internal was supposed to be businesses that were already there, and even Roanoke Gas says that, you know, that's partly anything. The other part is external, and fracked gas is not one of the four categories of external business development that the county has said that it wants to see. They want resource stewardship for the environment. They want, and what they mean by that is quality, not just quantity. And they want active monitoring. They want you to be proactive. They want you to use best practices, and they want especially close attention to the industrial impact. They would like to see an agriculture presentation, and there's something that I think, I didn't hear it, maybe, maybe they've mentioned it, but the Mercaptin is the chemical that's used to put into the natural gas to make sure that you can smell it in case there's a leak. That's toxic. And they want to keep that on-site near the Roanoke River, and they're going to put a big storm drain in this facility. And your plan says that you're supposed to avoid toxic materials on these sites near water bodies. So with that, I can see my, my time is almost up, and it's very, very late. Thank you for your considerations. Very, very important matter. Really appreciate the thoroughness that you investigated this. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sannowite, please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Emily Sannowite, 506 Southgate Drive, Blacksburg. I apologize for keeping you even later, but I do have one thing that has not been said that I would like to get entered into the record. I realize that it's very tempting to try to keep the gate station separate from the Mountain Valley Pipeline, and I would like to explain why I think that would be a mistake to separate the two. That is, there are at least two court cases that are still pending in the DC Circuit Court of Appeals that relate to eminent domain. Appalachian Voices et al. versus FERC and Bold Alliance et al. versus FERC. And these two cases, and there may be more, but these are two that I have been able to find, rely upon the claim to public need. So if you vote for this gate station, you are influencing, any vote on this is influencing potentially these two court cases. So that FERC is going to be arguing that it was right to permit Mountain Valley Pipeline because the pipeline is in the public need. And the landowners, our landowners, our Montgomery County landowners who have been fighting eminent domain for four years now and more, are arguing that this gas is not for public need. And you've heard some testimony tonight about the extent to which this gas is for export. The only claims to public need are the Franklin County potential tap that's not been finalized for their industrial park, which is unnecessary to serve that industrial pipe. Roanoke Gas Company could, Bonnie O'Al tells me, run existing lines 10, 20 miles from where they already serve and service that industrial park with what they already have. They've had the ability to serve that part of Franklin County for 50 years and have chosen to do so. So that, that tap is also, some would argue, unnecessary. In any case, that is one tap that would make a claim for public need. You're the second. A vote for this gate station is a vote for using eminent domain on your constituents' property. And we don't know right now what the final route will be. There's a chance, because they don't have a permit through Jefferson National Forest, that they may need to make claims to additional land in our county to reroute around Jefferson National Forest, and that would be through districts that so far have not been affected, but could be affected if the route has to change because Jefferson National Forest permit is not reinstated. So that was my one plea, a delay of even nine months, and I appreciated Supervisor Demott's question about what your legal requirement is, about how long before you would need to vote. A delay might allow these court cases to be heard so that your vote does not endorse, if you were to vote yes on the gate station, endorse the taking of private citizens' land for corporate profit. And the last thing I want to say is that it should be clear from the number of speakers tonight and at the Planning Commission that a vote for this special use permit is a claim to know what's good for your constituents better than they do. And I don't think that's who you are. Thank you for devoting so much of your time to serving us and staying so late.
That's the end of the public comment. At this time, we traditionally allow the applicant to be able to respond. The hour is like, if you all would like to respond to some of the claims made, we would like to give you that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. Good evening. I'm Paul Nester, Chief Financial Officer of Roanoke Gas Company. I would like to briefly respond to some of the items that are specific to the special use permit. Number one, there is no related compressor station on Mountain Valley Pipeline tied to this gate station request. The capacity that Roanoke Gas would take from Mountain Valley Pipeline is already built into the approved specifications of the pipe. Number two, there is no use of eminent domain by Roanoke Gas Company associated with this gate station, gate station request, or related piping to the gate station. Number three, Roanoke Gas has no legal ownership interest in the Mountain Valley Pipeline entity. Number four, the statistics that John provided in his presentation, speaking to the demand of our customers in the Roanoke Valley area, are publicly available. Our parent company, RGC Resources, is a publicly traded entity. Those statistics and much of our history statistically is available with the Securities and Exchange Commission. John and myself certified of the truth and accuracy of those statistics quarterly and annually. I would like to highlight three examples that speak to demand. The polar vortex of January 2014, where we had temperatures in the Roanoke Valley of minus five to plus five degrees for approximately a 24-hour period. February 2015, we had a similar weather pattern. And January 1st and 2nd, 2018, the so-called bomb cyclone of this year. When we have temperatures like that on our system, we are forced to interrupt as an example of following customers. Roanoke Memorial Hospital, Lewis Gale Hospital, Steel Dynamics, Yokohama, and many of the other large customers on our system. Most importantly, delaying approval of this permit will increase cost. Mr. Drazio spoke to this. The cost of delay would be significant. I'd like to provide a simple analogy. If you have an existing home or an older home, and you choose to put ductwork and an HVAC system in it that it didn't have, it is very expensive, comparing that to putting that kind of system in a new home as it is being constructed. This is no different. Constructing this gate station while the Mountain Valley is being constructed without being pressurized is a significant cost savings. Being regulated by the State Corporation Commission, higher costs are passed on to our customers. We would not like to pass on the higher costs to our customers due to delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? At this point in time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll move on. Next time our agenda-
Chris, I'm sorry. Chair Tuck, can we just explain for the people that are here what's going to happen next, just to make sure it's very clear?
In all likelihood, when we do agenda review, this matter will be on our agenda for our second meeting in October. That is what we've traditionally done. We do not vote. If there is any opposition, it gives, in my opinion, the supervisors a couple of weeks to reflect on what they've heard and be able to get additional information. And so that's what will in all likelihood take place. There will not be another public hearing. However, there is a public address during our meetings, and you would be able to address the board once again. During that period of time, sometimes that applicant will come forward to address some of the questions that supervisors may have had during the application. And so I anticipate that that would take place. But traditionally- But traditionally, that is what we have done, and I don't see any reason why we would change that at this point in time. There may be a vote to continue the matter over. There may be a vote to go ahead and vote on it at that time, but traditionally, we've set it for the next meeting unless, and we do try to work with applicants unless there was a reason why the applicant typically would ask for it to be postponed. Does that clarify things? Thank you.
Yeah.
That being said, we have other things on our agenda, but I believe that there is a public address, and we have just gone through, believe it or not, if there's folks who wish to address the board on any issue not related to the pipeline, they can address the board at this point in time. I know that there was one fellow who addressed the board about a road during the public comment, but if there's anyone else who would like to address the board about another subject, please come forward now before I close the public address. Seeing no one coming forward at this point in time, I'll close the public address. There is no addendum. Is there a motion in regards to consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Oats.
Next item on our agenda is new business, which is legislative priorities. Is there a motion in regards to legislative priorities?
So moved.
And second?
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on this issue? On the legis- Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for incorporating the different things that we brought up during our discussion. I think it was really well wordsmithed.
I agree.
Supervisor Bowden?
I was wondering if we could include us wanting Virginia to pass the Equal Rights They only need one more state in the United States to pass it, and I would love Virginia to be the last state to do that.
Say it again.
The Equal Rights Amendment has never been passed, but they only need one more state to approve it, for it to be a constitutional amendment.
I can only, I would like to look at the amendment. It has been a long time since I've looked at the amendment, and it's 11:15. I wish that you would have contacted or asked the staff when we had the prior meeting to add that so we could reflect on it. I don't necessarily oppose it. Would have probably voted for it, but without looking at the wording of the amendment, I don't oppose equal pay for equal work regardless of race, religion, or gender, and would be happy to support it, but I would like to read something before I say this is what I'm going to support. If you wish to make it part of the legislative agenda, we can postpone it, but we do need to get this so they can be able to draft the bills. But I'm just speaking for myself at this point in time. I'd like to read something before I vote and say this is what I'm going to be doing.
Can we do that between now and the next meeting?
I guess there's a motion and a second. I cannot recall who made the motion in the second.
Darrell made the motion.
There's a motion and a second. My Roberts Rules of Order went out about evidence at about 5:00 today.
If there's another motion that would supersede, you could vote on that motion.
I have one other thing that I just want clarification, and that is the online sales tax. Can we request that the counties and cities get their proportionate amount at 2010 levels, for example? Is that covered in any of those items on this legislative? I know that the state legislature is going to decide where all that money goes, but it's, we don't have any choice, meaning we keep losing the sales tax revenue, and they're controlling any portion that we might have.
So I understand what you're saying, and I actually agree with you, but because we're discussing some changes to this right now, and we already know that there's one change that we would need to consider down the road, can we just move the whole thing forward? And maybe you can develop some proposed language or something like that to add to it so we can have it in advance of our next meeting?
Sure.
Because our legislative dinner is not until the 28th of November, so there's urgency in adopting it, but not necessarily tonight.
Right. Okay.
The one thing I will say, there is an urgency because they are drafting the bills now.
Right.
And yes, we're going to have the legislative dinner, but the bills that are going to be passed in January are being drafted right now. And so, again, we had a meeting, added a lot of things. If we continue to have meetings and then add a couple more things, then we're not, one, we're not being productive with our time, but the second thing is, we're just, maybe the bills and some of the things that we really want to get passed are not going, we're not going to get bills. And so if we need to pass this over to another night, so be it. I believe that there's, is there a motion to continue?
I was just going to say, if you felt like that you really wanted to pass what's here tonight, can always pass an amendment at the next meeting, but-
Oh, that would probably be a really good course of action.
And if that would help any, in any way to get it. Yeah, I mean, couldn't we do that, Marty?
Yeah.
Would that help the situation, and then that would give you time to-
Sure.
So is there, I guess there's a motion and a second. At one, I don't recall there being a motion to continue, just discussion about continuing. So there's a motion and a second with the understanding that we may amend this here in two weeks.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
I say aye, but with the exception of seven.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Oats.
Next item is Highway Safety Improvement Program for Clay Street.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion at this late hour?
What is that all about?
It's the sidewalks on Clay Street.
And it's a VDOT grant potentially, and I'm maybe oversimplifying, and I'm looking for Emily for help.
It is a VDOT program. We do not have to endorse or submit anything on that, but this was looked at as an opportunity to encourage VDOT to consider it.
Because we don't control or in right of way, we don't actually put together the application, but in working with VDOT, just to get some information on several of the projects, the two projects we're going to be requesting, they said a resolution wouldn't hurt, so we put them together.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Oats.
Highway Safety Improvement Program Route 8. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Just one second. Sorry. Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Oats.
Community Planning Month. I was told that it's actually year-round that we celebrate planning, but is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Oats.
County Attorneys Report.
Just one quick comment. At the next board meeting, we'll start the process of moving the AEP, former AEP property into the town of Blacksburg, so look for that. We'll do next meeting, schedule a public hearing, and hopefully we'll be done before the end of the year.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all.
County Administrators Report.
Let it be noted that it's the first time that I ever remember that the county attorney had something and the county administrator did.
Board Supervisor Reports. I'll start off with Supervisor Shepherd.
Just one thing. The Pancake Breakfast is this coming weekend at Longchamp McCoy Fire Department from 6:30 to 11:30 in the morning.
On Saturday?
Saturday.
Do you deliver?
Ashley Dillon will be delivering.
Supervisor King?
No.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
We had our second meeting of the School Safety Committee last week, and they've made, I think, significant progress in that they've completed all the safety surveys for the schools, and they've come up with a couple of interesting observations, so I'm hoping that we're going to get to work on that at the next meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs?
No report.
Supervisor Bowden?
I'd like to announce that the whole community is invited to the Habitat for Humanity groundbreaking that will be taking place next to the Blacksburg Presbyterian Church, where they plan on building seven townhomes over the next couple of years for affordable housing in downtown Blacksburg. It's Saturday, October 20th, from 1:00 to 4:00. Love to see y'all.
Thank you. Vice Chair Demont?
Just one thing very quickly, and Marty is very humble about this, but I did want to call attention to some of the work that he does in our community, namely serving me hot dogs at the Blacksburg High School, football game working in the concession stand. And Marty does not make a big deal out of it, but he's also the coach of the softball team for Blacksburg High School. So thank you for the hot dogs that I did pay for, of course, and thank you for what you do in the community, Marty.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. The Chair has no report. This meeting is adjourned.